Historian, bioethicist, Dr. James Jones. His book, Bad Blood: The Tuskegee Syphilis Experiment.
I think there was no problem with the publication because as long as the, as the story, so to speak, stays within a closed society that sees its actions as self-validating, its questions as worthy of pursuit, that there's no opportunity to test, okay, that persuasion against the values of a larger society. I think part of it has to do with the culture of medicine, okay? And as far as, one of the, one of the things that I kept trying to find in this book, if you work anywhere around African-American history, there's something called agency. And if you want to be politically correct, you know, you better try to find some agency or there are people who are not going to like your work. I couldn't find agency in Tuskegee. I found victims. And when people want me to find agency, my response is, I wish I'd been able to.
Nurse Rivers is an agent.
Excuse me?
Nurse Rivers is an agent.
Agent, yeah. Nurse Rivers is an agent. Yeah. A question I thought I would get, because I find her certainly the most interesting person in the book, is Nurse Rivers. Because she is the linchpin figure. Without her, the Tuskegee experiment doesn't work. And she, let me start over something and have some truth and lending. I always tell people this because it's true. I have a soft spot in my heart for nurses. My grandmother was a squab woman at the community-owned hospital. I grew up in a company-owned town, and it was a company-owned hospital. And she was a squab nurse who worked her way up to become a practical nurse, or a squab lady who became a practical nurse. And she was extremely important in my life. She was one of the best things that ever happened to me. She was a great person. And a lot of what I think I know about the medical profession, I've learned by sitting with my mouth shut, listening to her and other practical nurses talk about the doctors and talk about their experiences in hospital. And it's a perspective that I've never lost touch with. So I am predisposed, okay, to be very kindly disposed toward nurses. When I wrote the Nurse Rivers chapter, I wrote it three times. And it was immediately, very shortly after I'd finally interviewed her, and she turned me down for interviews for years. The first chapter I wrote on Nurse Rivers, the portrait that came out looked remarkably like Nurse Ratched, big nurse from One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest. I wrote that chapter in Anchor. I put it aside literally for months, and then I went back and wrote it again. And the second chapter I wrote, or the second draft of that chapter, the woman who came out of that pass looked remarkably like Florence Nightingale. So the pendulum swung way over to the other side. I put that chapter aside for months. And the chapter that I found a resting place with, and my notion or understanding of her in the portrait that I create in the book, is the third draft. And that one is my effort to make peace with Nurse Rivers. But when I think about her, I think about her as a character. What I loved about working on the Tuskegee study, okay, was that I thought it was a very, you know, kind of small topic that I could ask large questions of. And that through narrative history, I could tell a story that would kind of insinuate by the reader some analysis about ethics and medicine. And that the power of the story would, you know, would carry, would carry the day, but at the end of the day, the people would be left with the same questions that haunted me about what's moral, what's not, what's right, what's wrong. And with Nurse Rivers, I was at, you know, I was at great pains to try to get it right. I'll tell you a story. This story is not in the book. When she finally agreed to be interviewed by me, what I did was not interview her at first. We spent three days together, the better part of three days. And what I asked her to do was to just drive around Macon County with me, take me to the places that were the roundup stations where they would gather the men, take me to these little black churches and shiloh and warrior stand and these places that, you know, were in the middle of nowhere, and just let me see the study through her eyes and tell me stories, you know, tell me stories. And we would go down these dirt roads, and we'd bend pine thickets, and then we'd break out of the pine thickets, and there'd be the cotton growing up to the shotgun shacks. And every turn of the road seemed to trigger a memory. And she would, she was a great storyteller and a warm, charismatic person. And in one of these turns, we came to the classic shotgun shack, and there's an old, there's an elderly black gentleman sitting on the, like, guy sitting on his porch. And she says, "Stop the car." So we stopped the car. And she yells at him, "Ned! Ned! I see you!" And he gets off, or gets up, and his hair is absolutely as white as the cotton, his posture is ramrod straight, he's got cataracts that look like milk duds, you know, or white milk duds in his eyes. And he's got a cane, and he starts coming toward her screaming at the top of his lungs, "Nurse Rivers! Nurse Rivers! You come back!" And they go up, and they hug each other. And he says, you know, "How come you don't see us no more? You are a nurse!" And she says, "Shut up, Ned. Shut up, Ned. You can't have me and the money too." You know, he'd gotten a settlement. "You can't have me and the money too." And they hug each other. And I thought, Lord God, what do I do with that scene I just saw? I also saw Nurse Rivers when we were in Tuskegee. We would go back usually to this one cafe for lunch. And I saw her neighbors, her townspeople, black Americans, cross the street and not walk on the same side of the street with her. I saw her shunned. I saw both things. And I saw Nurse Rivers with a kind of dignity trying to keep her head up. Because she had spent her whole life, in her mind, thinking she did good, and she had to confront the fact that what she did was moral suicide. When I interviewed her, and I don't, I didn't put this in the book, but when I interviewed her and we finished the interview, something came up. Several times as we drove around, several times, she would say something like, "Well, maybe we did do some things wrong, but people don't know how much good we did. And they don't know, you know, they don't, you know, maybe we did some..." And I would cut her off. I'd say, "I don't want to hear what you did wrong. I just want you to tell me about what, you know, how it was. Just tell me stories." So after I turned off the tape recorder and got enough, and I looked one last time over my shoulder, because, and the little couch in her immaculate, neat little house, on the wall, over the couch, was a photograph of Martin Luther King and a framed copy of the Florence Nightingale pledge, those two things. And I had looked at those one more time, and I had turned around to her, and I said, "Nurse Rivers, a couple of times you've started to say something, and I've been unspeakably rude. I've cut you off each time." I said, "I'd be very grateful if you'd tell me now what you thought was wrong." And she said, and she was, her lip was quivering, and she was trying so hard to maintain composure. She said, "Oh, Dr. Jones, we should have told those men they had syphilis, and God knows we should have treated them." She's the only person connected with the experiment that I know of who's made any kind of recognition of that wrongdoing. And I wrote a piece recently for, you know, a kind of retrospective of Tuskegee. And I, in that piece, I called it "Of Forgiveness." And I said, "I hope that part of the legacy of Tuskegee will be forgiveness for Nurse Rivers." Because she lived then for the rest of her life with the moral catastrophe that was her life. But when I think about her, a friend of mine, who's a black African-American historian, when I wrote that book, called me, and we had an angry conversation. He said, "The trouble with you, Jones, is that you're a goddamn guilty Southern liberal. And you don't know evil when you see it. That bitch was evil! And why you try to create this nuanced, you know, portrait is, you know, you need to pick true, you need to pull the trigger. You need to, you know, tell it like it is." And I thought about Nurse Rivers, okay? And I said, "Look, you have your truth. I can't find it in my heart to have that kind of moral closure that you have. But, you know, you're, that's it? Your view." And then I thought about Nurse Rivers really as a paradigm, as a, as an interesting kind of window into what it's like to be an upwardly mobile black person. You know, am I going on too hard? Do you want to quit? Yeah, it's probably, yeah, that's another story. Okay.
Context of White Supremacy. Justice Gus T. Renegade in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. Today's date would be Friday, June 29th, 2012, so I have been told. If you're listening in the chat room, if you can let me know if we are being heard clearly, I can, just want to make sure there's no distortion, not having any audio difficulties thus far. No, we have reading and such today, so I definitely don't want to be chucking along, reading if the audio is distorted or not coming through clearly. So any of the folks on the, in the chat room that talks to you, if you can let me know, or if you are not in the chat room, you can shoot me an email, untiljustice@gmail.com, just to let me know if we're coming through clear. All right. The sound clip that you heard at the beginning of the broadcast, James H. Jones, suspected racist, author of Bad Blood on the Tuskegee experiment. I would definitely recommend that book to anyone out there who hearing any black people talk about racism, white supremacy, if you think, well, you all are just exaggerating and you're making a big to-do about nothing. Or if you are serious about racism, white supremacy, you should still read that book. You definitely, we should know a lot of details around what happened with the Tuskegee experiment. And I think this is a sad illustration of Dr. Ani's contention about what it means to be a quote-unquote "cultural other" in a system of white supremacy. James Jones, the author of that book, the segment that you heard at the beginning, that is from about a 90-minute talk that he gave at the University of New Hampshire earlier this year. I would encourage folks to check that out as well. It's on YouTube. You can check out the whole 90 minutes. He goes a bit more in-depth about how the book came together. That anecdote that you heard is not in the book. He gives some other details that are not in the book. Definitely check it out. I think it's, it's good. And it's pretty new. Just, he gave that lecture maybe two months ago. So I would encourage folks, check it out if you have the time and/or interest. We will be back tomorrow before we get started. Compensatory call-in, that would be Saturday evening, June 30th, Saturday, June 30th, 9:00 PM Eastern, 6:00 PM Pacific. Definitely dial in. Always good to hear from non-white people, their observations, experiences. If you have workplace experiences, that would be great too, for us to kind of get a better idea of different trifling antics that white people are pulling on the job, and to maybe get some strategies to how best to go about dealing with it. Always, always, always important to kind of be dialoguing about what is happening to us on the plantation and some of the successful strategies that folks have implemented to counter white terrorism on the job. But that would be tomorrow. We also will be back on Sunday. If folks have been following on Facebook, we'll have a broadcast Sunday evening. There is a fantastic website that is all engineered for black survivors of sexual trauma. And they have resources, books, suggestions, links for counseling, online resources, just phenomenal information, and it's all geared towards black people. The folks who are responsible for that website, they will be with us on Sunday evening to answer questions. If folks want to call in, you can be anonymous, you can dial in, ask questions, what have you, get their input. Really looking forward to that. I know folks had said that that was a big topic on the Cows Group Facebook page about sexual trauma, sexual molestation. That was something that I had kind of been looking to get more information around, and it took me some time. But actually, the article that the caller mentioned this past weekend, that's in the New York Times Magazine about Horace Mann Academy and the predators in these prep schools, read that article, and it had links for some other sites that were dealing with the same subject matter. And bang, that's what I found, and we should have several programs. I tried to contact some of the authors that they recommend as well, and some of those folks should be visiting us as well. One of the books that they recommended from a black author in the UK who also deals with child sexual molestation and racism, she has a whole book on that very subject, racism and child molestation, and she's agreed to be on the program as well. So hopefully we'll be able to get out a lot more detailed information on that subject matter in the weeks to come. Stay tuned. All righty. Second-to-last study session on Yorugu, Dr. Marimba Ani's extraordinary book, An African-Centered Critique of European Cultural Thought and Behavior. I hope people have been keeping up with the reading. We are at the finish line or pretty close to it. Next week should be our last study session on Yorugu. If you've not been keeping up with the reading, you, you know, have your time now. You can read at your own pace and kind of use the programs that have dealt with this book as kind of a study guide, if you think it would help your understanding of the book. They'll be available as soon as we finish up. Next week, I'm going to make a blog post, and so I'll have all of the study sessions on Yorugu. They'll be together, get some of the other online sources and kind of put that all in one place so that people will have it. That way they'll have something to kind of be a companion guide, to help them get through the book if they're having some confusion, they're not understanding some of the concepts, or they have questions. And hopefully, the crim della crim, we'll be able to get Dr. Ani herself on the program. That is the hope, and that'll kind of be the cherry on top to hopefully clear up confusion around the book. And again, just to emphasize, I think this is just an extremely important text with regards to understanding racism, white supremacy, white people. And I think this book really does a fantastic job of connecting those two. Racism, white supremacy is white people. All right. For this week, we are, I think we only read the first, maybe, couple pages of chapter eight last week, which was fine, because the bulk of it we'll do this week. Chapter eight, which is Behavior Toward Others, meaning non-white people, what it means to be a non-white person, and how you can expect to be abused and terrorized by white people worldwide. Lots of examples in the chapter. Read a little bit last week, but as I said, the bulk of it we're going to be doing, touching on this week. Going to start off on page 429. Again, want to emphasize, this was never intended to be a Gus, just get on and read from the book. Definitely is about participation, supposed to be set up like a book club. People call in and share their thoughts about the book. Definitely, if you have questions and/or other passages from the book that you think are important, that people should think about and hear, definitely dial in to participate. If we don't have participation, we definitely will not be going the full three hours. And certainly, if people have not been keeping up with the reading and we're not having participation related to this, we will not be going the full three hours with the program. All right. Page 429. Mid, about three-quarters of the way down the page, this is chapter eight, Behavior Towards Other. The cultural other represents that which is negative in the European definition of value. It is the symbol of non-value. Yet Europeans have consistently acted to place themselves into a position of proximity with the peoples whom they despise, whom they consider unworthy. Only in terms of the dynamics of the European utmorojo does this behavior make sense. The principles of capitalism and the greed that it unleashes certainly contribute to the European quest for relationship with the cultural other and results in what appears often to be contradictory behavior, in which the sentiments of a staunch white nationalism seemingly conflict with the interests of economic exploitation. From the point of view of Wayne MacLeod, who describes himself as a racialist, avaricious capitalism becomes evident as an enemy to the culture-bearing strata of Western society when it recruits labor of the darker races endangering the livelihood of the white. This would appear to be the logical position, given the premise of white nationalist ideology. And if it had been taken consistently, once the indigenous population had been exterminated, American society would have been homogeneously white, Western European, or maybe the first comers would never have left Europe in the first place. But the patterned behavior of Europeans points to the presence of other dynamics that lie beneath the surface of common white nationalist propaganda. White nationalism is, after all, white supremacy, and therefore requires two variables, a superior and an inferior. It's 429 to 430. I thought very important segment that she touches on right there. I think a lot of people have noted that contradiction or some of the inconsistencies, where white people will talk all this about despising black people and not wanting us around, but not able to keep their hands off of us, certainly not able to stay out of bed or out of the backseat of a vehicle, or Jerry Sandusky, whatever the case may be. And I think it, I think she hits it right on the head. As I have maintained consistently, white people are not interested in killing all of the non-white people. I think Mr. Fuller has made this point over and over again. If white people wanted to kill all the non-white people, they could have done that a long time ago. If they just wanted to kill all the black people, they could have done that a long time ago. We do not have any defense, any army that's going to step in their way to prevent them from doing so. They enjoy it the way it is. They like having the opportunity. They need the opportunity to exercise racism, white supremacy. They need to have black people around to stomp on, to feel good about themselves. Continuing, same vein, this is on 431, 431. But in the logic of European ideology, the importation of despised peoples is not contradictory. Rather, the action and the sentiment complement each other within the complex and unique construct that is the European utmorojo. That is why capitalist behavior and white nationalism do not conflict, and why it takes more than the factor of the capitalist ethic to explain the Europeans' need for the presence of the cultural other, non-white people. Covell talks about ambivalence towards feces. These historical pattern in the behavior of the European, insofar as it is motivated by the desired presence of peoples of other cultures, is ethnologically understood by the recognition of two related factors. First, as stated earlier, the nature of the culture requires the cultural other as the proper object of its destructiveness in order to mitigate these negative effects within the culture itself. Other cultures can survive in isolation; European culture, by its very nature, cannot. And second, the presence of the cultural other and her successful dehumanization is for Europeans the necessary demonstration of European supremacy. This constant reaffirmation is essential. Very important point. Again, I think a lot of people have noted that contradiction and saying, if, you know, white people, if they really, you know, have difficulties and that sort of thing with non-white people, why don't they just, you know, put up some fences or restrict it or leave us alone? They could have put us all back on the continent of Africa. That's not what they want. White people want to be able to practice racism, white supremacy. In fact, if folks remember the images of white people pretending to be Trayvon Martin, they like that sort of thing. They enjoy it. They have a grand old time. They need black people around to enjoy terrorizing. I saw just this week some white people, they got caught, and they were actually charged and convicted for hanging a dead raccoon above the residence of some black people. They enjoy that sort of thing. They would not, their life, they would literally go crazy and begin to destroy other white people if they did not have a non-white outlet for all of their aggressive, violent behavior. Jerry Sandusky, oh my gosh. No black children around that I can sodomize and terrorize? Man. Quentin Tarantino, no black people around that I can put in my films and call nigger 50,000 times and blow their head off and anally rape them? Oh, I would, my, his film career would be over. We have the phone lines. I do see a hand up. I believe this might be our caller via Brooklyn. Your line should be open. Shibidoo, sir.
Yes, um, yeah, that, in that last paragraph you're reading, where he said, um, ambivalence towards feces? I, I was kind of, I jotted that down because I kind of didn't fully understand what that meant, but I think, I kind of understand. I guess it kind of means like, they associate the, I mean, within what he, within his, what, like, in his theory, I guess, he's associating the excrement with the cultural other, and then he says that they're ambivalent towards the other. Is that it?
Can you say that one more time? I'm sorry.
I guess that, like, the ambival, the ambivalence, quote-unquote, ambivalence towards feces of Joel Covell is a theory, whatever. So he's saying that the ambivalence is towards the cultural other, which is associated with feces?
Correct. Correct. And that, I think we, I don't remember, but I think we mentioned some of that before, where part of his theory, he's saying that a lot of this is rooted in the developmental stages, where the whole potty training, the anal phase, that becomes traumatic for white people, where they are separated from the group, they're not allowed to come back to rejoin, white people, mom, dad, whomever else, until they finish their business, have a bowel movement on the potty, and they end up being isolated, so it can be a traumatic experience, where that trauma is associated with feces, dark matter, and that that ends up being translated to non-white people in this quest for purity, whiteness. And I think you see that, I do, I mean, I think we talked about it before, where the consistent references black people to feces or comparisons to black people in feces. But I think, yes, that is a part of Covell's theory. And I think she even touches on that later, because she devotes some time later in this chapter to going more in-depth with some of the theories people have as to why white people practice racism, white supremacy. And she does spend, she spends, I think, three, four pages on Covell's theory and this whole anal business, and if she thinks that's valid, as well as some other folks. But yeah, I think, unless I'm confused, and that could be, but I think, yes, that's, that's what's going on there with this comparison with the feces and non-white people.
Right. It's pretty interesting. Um, just comes to mind, I'm thinking about my, you know, attempted mother remarks on how, you know, young we were when we got potty-trained and how quickly we learn and everything. And then, like, I was working with this white lady, a suspected racist, a couple of years ago in California, and, um, working with her, and I actually lived on her property. And then she, I guess she saw that movie, Babies, in which it follows several different babies of different so-called ethnicities, and, um, to see, like, how they develop. And then she's like, she's like, an older woman, you know, professional, like, writes grants, you know, like, you know, maintains these, you know, government position and stuff. She's some kind of a, you know, goes, quote-unquote, "good white people," you know. But, um, she's like, "Yeah, I saw the movie Babies, and you'll never guess which baby was the smartest." You know, she's like, "You'll never guess." And I'm, I'm like at work, I'm like, whatever, you know, I wasn't really biting. And I'm like at work, I'm like, whatever, you know, I wasn't really biting, you know. She's like, "You'll never guess," and I just wasn't really trying to guess, you know, I wasn't really thinking about it. And she's like, "The black baby." I'm like, "Yeah."
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, I guess with the whole anal thing, what I guess people can, you know, offer their thoughts about. And I guess I should remind people too, Joel Covell, the person who, the white guy, uh, who put forth this theory, he's been on the program before. He was here in, uh, October of 2010. You can dig back in the archives to check out what he had to say. We went through his book, Racism Psycho- Psychoanalysis. Um, and I guess we'll be talking about it a little bit more today. It's kinda towards the end of Chapter Eight, when she's digging into some of the different theories, Dr. Welzing as well. Um, and people, if you want, you know, can offer your, your thoughts on whether you think that, uh, that theory holds anyway, is valid, with regards to why white people do what they do. Um, yeah, I'll reserve further, further comments until we, um, get more on, on what he has to say about all that, until later in the chapter. Um, I don't know, did you, did you have anything else?
Yeah, sorry. I, I was just gonna say, um, uh, is this already past the part where they're talking about, um, communism with the Sandinistas? Yeah, I guess that was a little bit earlier. But, um, it's interesting, I was reading through that part, she was talking about, um, how the political violence, um, and all the, um, all the lying and stuff with the, um, you know, the, um, American, so-called American, uh, government, uh, selling guns to, to, um, so-called freedom fighters in South America, or to Iran, just all this, you know, just, uh, jumbled, like, political, you know, lying and everything, and, um, and then there was a guy on the train with a baby, a couple, racist, you know, with his baby and his wife on the train, and he had a shirt on, that, you know, like the Chi Guevara shirts, except instead of Chi Guevara's face, you know, with the hat with little star on it, it had a monkey instead of Chi's face, you know, the classic shirt.
Hmm, wow. Standard practice, uh, dehumanization of non-white people, standard practice. Um, wow, that's, uh, yeah, that, that's, I mean, it's all part of this chapter, so that's all, you know, valid, uh, to be brought up, because it's the same chapter, Chapter Eight, where she's talking about, um, the Iran-Contra affair with Ronald Reagan, and, um, destabilizing, uh, different non-white, uh, areas, uh, in Latin America. Um, same thing, same pattern of behavior. I would even compare and contrast, it's, unless my information is bad, I don't recall Ronald Reagan, Oliver North, any of these people being held in contempt of Congress. Uh, if you want a comparison, contrast to what happens when you are an other, behavior towards others, non-white people, Eric Holder being voted in contempt first time in the history of this area of the world, the Attorney General held in contempt of Congress for not providing documents, uh, where they say one white person was killed in this so-called Fast and Furious operation. I don't think anyone, uh, Ronald Reagan, Oliver North, I don't think any of them were held, uh, in contempt of Congress, uh, during, you know, that whole...
Oliver North is a correspondent on Fox.
Hmm, hmm, hmm.
You guys own, yeah, I mean, they, they get promoted, you know, like you said, they get promoted, they don't get, uh, they don't get fired or penalized, they get promoted.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Um, military history, he has a DVD, uh, series as well. Um, I remember this, this came up before, we, I was having a conversation, uh, way, way back, quite some time ago, uh, back in 2007, when The Cows first started, and, uh, we were talking about racist man, racist woman, and their activities, and someone brought up Oliver North, and they said, "Well, he's an example of a white person who was punished for practicing racism." And I said, "Well, punished how?" And he said, "Well, he's in jail right now." And I said, uh, this is 2007, they were saying this, and I said, "That's, uh, no, I don't, I don't think that's accurate. I don't think, uh, he's in greater confinement." And of course, he's not, he's hosting television programs and making DVDs. Um, yeah, just for comparison, contrast sake. Um, but yeah, that, that whole, the whole chapter she does, um, some of that is before 420, but she talks about just constant examples. It's, it's more than we could name, uh, things that are done to non-white people. Uh, I think she even points out specifically a lot of what was motivating this behavior. Uh, it was dangerous to white people, racist man, racist woman, racist child, the thought of having independent, non-white people who were looking to assert some sort of autonomy, self-dependence, not gonna rely on white people, we're gonna think for ourselves, just that idea of having any sort of non-white example anywhere in the world, where people are trying to do their own thing, oh, they've gotta be savages, they've gotta be criminalized, they've gotta be attacked. Uh, same thing, I think, make comparisons with Libya, if you want more current examples, um, even what's, uh, going on, the way that Cuba, uh, the way that they're treated, uh, formerly Fidel Castro, um, I'd say, same example, same example, uh, with the economic sanctions and what have you against Cuba that have been in place for, I don't even know, years and years and years. Uh, standard operating procedure with regards to the way that non-white people are treated, mistreated worldwide.
Right, and then they have, uh, out here in, uh, in Greece, I remember a few weeks, a few weeks back, um, a racist, um, older man, not even old, I mean, probably, you know, in the lower retirement range of like, you know, early sixties or something, blew his brains out on the, uh, on the, um, lawn of the city hall, and had a little note on him that said, "I don't wanna have to eat out of dumpsters because of this, this crazy, of all this, um, you know, exotic, uh, um, financial instruments that are like breaking down in, in Europe." Um, and then now, I guess they're like creating some kind of new, um, organization that's gonna be just all about, um, mechanism to stabilize all the failing nations in Europe that they can maintain their, like, fantastic, you know, level of, uh, other comparative, um, their, you know, their lifestyle. So it's, yeah, the standard is glaring, but it's, uh, consistent with, uh, what we're reading about.
She gives, as I said, tons of examples. And worldwide, that's one of the other things, I think some people had, uh, talked about that, uh, with regards to, this is a global pattern of behavior, where she's talking about same conduct, uh, in Vietnam, Grenada, the Philippines, Latin America, the continent of Africa, doesn't matter, worldwide, uh, if you are not white. Desmond Tutu, I could go back to, uh, Witness to Apartheid. I hope, I think people posted the link in the chatroom, I hope people were able to check that out. There's a segment where Desmond Tutu is talking about, uh, nonviolence, and he's saying that, you know, uh, for nonviolence to be effective, there has to be a minimum standard of moral conduct, uh, meaning there has to be at least some ground level where people say, "Okay, well, you know, we're, we're not gonna let it get past this. We might, we might abuse these people, we might mistreat them, but, you know, we have some minimum standards of conduct." So there's some things that we absolutely will not tolerate being done to these people, even though we are mistreating them. And he says, uh, with white people, with regards to the way that they treat black people, that minimum moral standard of conduct has not been demonstrated. It has just been shown repeatedly, anything goes, if you're not white, particularly if you're black, anything goes. Anything is possible, anything can happen to you if you are a non-white person. And this is Desmond Tutu, Nobel Peace Prize winner, saying, "Hey, you would be logical, it would be correct for you to have serious, uh, concerns about a nonviolent strategy in dealing with people who have shown this pattern of, uh, behavior worldwide and consistently."
Yeah, um, here, let me, let me read this, uh, on page 433. Um, this is from Arma, I guess, 2000, 2000, or I guess maybe one of his writings, um, "This land is ours, not through murder, not through theft, but by way of violence, or not by way of violence or any other trickery. This has always been our land. Here we began, here we will continue, even after the thousand seasons scattering and the thousand seasons groping, through the white death, sometimes openly, often covertly, seductively now, brutally at other times. Change, change is mean, but always seeks one end, our extermination. Um, with the knowledge of..." And that's Arma, "With the knowledge," and this is, uh, back to, um, Ani, "with the knowledge of na- of the nature of European culture, it's a silly, and being aware of history, the African-centered person similarly understands that the European, um, suspected racist is capable of doing anything to destroy people of African descent or any other majority of people, as long as it is perceived to be in the European interest. The concept of the cultural other eliminates the question of morality. That is its function. Since whatever moral issues are raised pertain to the European only, the discussion is in-house, quote-unquote. Two circumstances come to mind that can be interpreted as part of an ongoing attempt to destroy African people, both on the continent and in the diaspora. One is the infamous Tuskegee experiment, the other is the current existence and spread of the AIDS virus." And she goes into talking about AIDS, but, um, and Tuskegee, but I just, uh, I guess I just never really looked at it in the way that she, you know, kinda like brings it up, kinda like in modern, a modern, um, version of like what they did to the Native Americans with the smallpox blankets and everything, and, uh, just, you know, all that stuff, they're killing off all the Native Americans and pollinations and stuff with all their diseases. But, talking about syphilis and AIDS.
Context, context, that's why I said, I think, for, I think, many people, um, I won't say many, uh, but I think a significant number of people, they have some information about what happened with the Tuskegee syphilis experiment. I would encourage folks, James Jones, uh, read that book, great material. Uh, he is a suspected racist white person, James Jones, but does have great information about what fellow white people, uh, did to black people for forty years, uh, and that lecture as well, that you heard the clip at the beginning of the program. I also think, um, just fantastic information, uh, about what they did. And again, this is a consistent pattern of behavior. I think Dr. Ani makes that point, uh, over and over, particularly in this chapter, uh, towards the end. Uh, this is a pattern of behavior. Uh, it is incorrect to look at this out of context, or to look at these sorts of incidents and say, "Well, oh, this is, this is anomalous behavior. This is just, you know, one rotten apple, uh, on the white teen, one, one bad example, they just, they had a bad day, or they had a bad year, and Tuskegee would be a case of a bad forty years, uh, of this unjust, monstrous behavior in terrorizing these black people and just watching them die for their entertainment." But this is a long pattern of behavior, of how they operate with regards to non-white people, uh, and you really do not get an accurate understanding of what it means to be a white person, when you do not look at this as, "Oh, this is how they function. The acili of white people dictates that they are going to function in a terroristic manner towards non-white people in all areas of people activity. Dominate, terrorize, that's what it's gonna be." I note, definitely with, uh, the Tuskegee example, just touching on, it's pretty close to what you were talking about with the, with the whole AIDS section, she deals with that as well. Uh, this is on page, uh, 435, 435, uh, which is important, you heard him, he was talking about the black nurse that was involved, uh, in the Tuskegee experiment, Eunice Rivers, that's her name. There's also a film out, Laurence Fishburne is in it, uh, Alfred Woodard, cowbell would be ringing, uh, Alfred Woodard is in, is in it as well, uh, Miss Ever's Boys, that's the name of it. Um, Real Shrewd Strategy. Uh, this is an experiment that was concocted by white people. People in charge were white people, people who carried it out, all of this, white people. Uh, but they put the face on this film, Miss Ever's Boys, where the focus shifts to the black nurse, who was working for these white people. And I just, white people, they, they are always, as Dr. Ani states in the book, they are always working in the political interest of white supremacy, and especially so with that film. And these were adults, right, in quotes, uh, the, the victims in this study, they were males that were well above twenty, but they are referenced as Miss Ever's Boys. Hmm, uh, but this is on page 435, uh, 435, same chapter, Chapter Eight, Behavior Towards Others. Uh, "The implications of the Tuskegee experiment are staggering, but only if one does not understand the nature, the acili, of European culture and the character of European ideology. Black men were asked to allow themselves to be tested for, quote-unquote, 'bad blood.' If chosen, either because they tested positive or as a part of the control group, they were to come periodically to the clinics for observation. They were under the impression that they were coming for treatment. Why did they respond at all? They were mostly poor and were given incentives, such as free physical examinations, free rides to and from the clinics, hot meals on examination days, and free treatment for minor ailments. Uh, they were also befriended, in quotes, by a Negro nurse, Nurse Eunice Rivers, whom they trusted and who served as a liaison between whites and their black objects of study. She made the men feel that they were part of an exclusive social club and burial society that guaranteed their relatives fifty dollars for their funerals." And we're talking like nineteen thirties, forties, Depression era, fifty dollars at that time, lot of money. Uh, Eunice Rivers was perhaps the most victimized of all, transformed into an enemy of her people. I wanna back up and just read that sentence one more time, really stuck out to me. "Eunice Rivers was perhaps the most victimized of all, transformed into an enemy of her people." Really, I think people, if you've listened to The Cows before, where I've kinda harped on, uh, getting away from that tendency, uh, to want to criticize and fuss at other black people who are confused and not working in our own self-interest, uh, to really, uh, discourage that sort of behavior, I don't think it's in our best interest. And really, I think it is in our best interest to perceive these people as, they have been extremely victimized. Uh, when you have been contaminated with racist concepts, to the point where you are working in the best interest directly of racist man, racist woman, and harming other black people, I mean, that is white supremacist success at its best, or worse, depending on your perspective. And I just thought, it was interesting, you heard the sound clip at the beginning where, uh, James Jones, white guy, is saying that this black male called him and was fussing, and has called, uh, Nurse Rivers a black bee, and all this, and that woman was evil, which again, the, the animosity gets directed at another black person, not the white people who were most to blame for what happened here. Uh, I just don't think that- Uh, I just don't think that that is constructive. I mean, if this, if the end result is just gonna be sitting around and finding a way to call another black person a bee, and to yell and stomp at them about how dumb and ignorant they are, and it's their fault blaming them for our problems, you don't really need to read any books. You don't need to study anything. Black people run around and call each other bees and, and names, we do that anyway. You don't need to read Dr. Ani's book, if that's gonna be the end result. And that's just something, that is my view, I know certainly everyone doesn't agree. My view continues to be, we are all still very confused, because this system is still in operation, we are all, to some degree or another, doing things that are helping white people. We could probably all be fussed at, uh, to some degree or another, for working in the interest of white people directly and/or indirectly. As long as this system exists, I think it is best, and I think it's accurate, to view other non-white people, especially black people, as victims, and to focus any of that animosity towards white folks, 'cause that's where it should be directed. White men, white women, white children, those are the people that we should be angry with, not other victims of racism. I'll stop there. I don't know if our caller in Brooklyn had any comments, or I'll check to see if any of the other folks had questions, comments, before I proceed. Uh, the number again, seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six, and the code is five six four nine four three pound.
Uh, that's a great point, um, it's like, uh, people don't kinda appreciate, um, I guess, uh, it's, it's, uh, like the, I don't know, it's, it's a good point, just, um, we're all, we're all contributing to, to this, you know, to keeping this whole white supremacy system operating, and we can't benefit from it, because we aren't white. So, like, you know, the, the closer you would get to, to where you would be, you know, just, just, just giving, giving more than the usual people, like, we were just, you know, people that have more power are more beholden to the people that, that are oppressing us. So, they're, they're, they're getting worse treatment, the more power they have, I would, you know, it does, it's logical. It's like the crab in the ba- like crab in the barrel kind of a thing. We kinda had a frustration lash out at each other, but we don't realize that we're all in the same barrel.
I'm gonna reference, I'm so glad I went through and, and reread, uh, the book, that's gonna be one of my reference points, uh, from this point forward. Anytime I hear somebody saying, uh, Charles Barkley, he should be beaten, that would be another cowbell ring. Uh, Charles Barkley, he should be whipped and beaten for wearing that dress, or Sammy Sosa, he should be beaten for taking those skin bleaching pills, or any, any black person, I don't care who it is, President Obama, I don't like what he's doing, he should be beaten, uh, I'm, bing, Dr. Ani pointed at the Eunice Rivers, uh, who was integral, and I mean, she was integral, and I think she, she realized, I think you heard that in the clip, she understood that to some degree, like, man, I was not doing the correct thing. Um, if Dr. Marimba Ani can point at her, and say that I think this was the person who was most victimized, psh, everybody else is a victim moving forward, not even spending any time calling the names or looking to find a black person to blame for racism, white supremacy. Um, let me see, next section, um, let's see here, on four, four thirty-six, four thirty-six to four thirty-seven, next section, I did wanna take, uh, one second, can you, hold on one sec. Okay. So, having had to unplug my, uh, headset momentarily, I did wanna take one sec, Ebony News Channel, she, uh, has hooked us up, she's been posting, uh, the segments for the Yorugu Study Session, she's put them together on her website, which is ebonynewschannel.info, ebonynewschannel.info, and on the Facebook page for contextofwhitesupremacy.com, uh, on the Facebook page, so you can check them out there, if you need them all kinda corralled in one place. I know we've been doing the sections, study sessions for like, two months now, so, uh, it might be kinda difficult if you're trying to wade through the Talk Shoe page and all the difficulties there. I guess another resource, if you wanna access all the pages easily, you can get them on iTunes, uh, that's one place where they should be, uh, relatively easy to access without too much trouble, iTunes is super easy, I'll give out the info for that before we, uh, wrap up. Uh, one, one second, make sure I, uh, actually gonna give myself one second, make sure that I have my headset, uh, correct here. Uh, while I take that one second, if anybody has, uh, any questions or things they would like to touch on in the book, definitely participate, as I said, if we don't have folks who, you know, have anything to share, or anything they wanna, uh, touch on in the book, we will definitely not be doing the full three, but I do have a few more things I wanna touch on as we roll, also see if I call in Brooklyn, if he has other points. Uh, just taking a quick sixty-second commercial to get my headset straight, and we'll be right back, context of white supremacy.
Racismdaily.com, your number one source for global news reports on race, racism, and overt actions of white supremacy. From Asia to the Americas, to Europe, to Australia, to Africa, racism is not a thing of the past, it is our current reality. Be informed, be globally informed, you should be the first to know. Racismdaily.com, racismdaily.com, racismdaily.com.
Is racism hurting you? On issues of race, are you unable to speak, think, and act with clarity and confidence? Are you tired of laughing when nothing is funny, smiling when you are not happy, agreeing when you really disagree? At counterracism.com, you can learn specific strategies and techniques to counter the behaviors of the people who practice racism in all areas of activity. Using words correctly, following counter-racist logic, even counter-racist science projects designed to reveal what racism is, how it works, and how to counter it. The open-source code-writing format allows you to pick and choose a variety of counter-racist suggestions, so you can produce the code that works for you. Stop by counterracism.com today, and help replace racism with justice.
That's counter-dash-racism.com.
Do you need a one-stop shop for all of your multimedia needs? Triumphant Multimedia is a skilled team of professionals with a passion for great marketing and chic design. Our specialties include consulting, brand development, copywriting, and creative graphic design, that's second to none. We also offer photography, photo retouching, videography, and video editing. At Triumphant Multimedia, our goal is to provide highly effective creative solutions built to suit any individual need or budget. Give us a call at six seven eight seven three two eight zero six seven, or check us out online at t r i multimedia.com.
Hi, everyone, welcome. This is Justice with the Cows Radio Program. If you want to learn about, understand, encounter racism, white supremacy, be sure not to miss a Cows episode. We keep 'em jam-packed with constructive information, to sharpen your use of words, to help eliminate the system of racism, white supremacy, ASAP. Also, to be able to invest in my counter-racist efforts, co-hosting The Cows Radio Program, please visit my blog, JustDoJusticeToday.blogspot.com.
You're just saying just buckets and buckets of words.
All right, took a little longer than sixty seconds, but I'm all good to go, headset should be straight. Again, y'all can let me know if, uh, there are any audio difficulties. All righty, uh, on four thirty-six, four thirty-six, bottom of the page, final paragraph. "It is a moot question as to whether the European physicians failed to treat the Africans because they wanted to observe them dying, or because they wanted to kill them. From an African-centered perspective, it is the same thing. And what about all of the people who could have been and were infected by the men with syphilis who didn't know that they had it? Perhaps this was part of the 'experiment,' in quotes. Knowing what we do of the European cultural acili, of the perverse nature of the European Udomorojo, and of the implications of the European concept of the cultural other, we can even conjecture, conjecture, excuse me, that they would be capable of injecting people of African descent with syphilis spirus, uh, spiracets, if only for the same reasons that they ostensibly conducted the experiment. Certainly, the Nazi doctors did this, and germ warfare is now used as a matter of course." This is four thirty-six to four thirty-seven, uh, one of our listeners, she wrote in about, uh, John Hopkins, where they were giving, uh, lead poisoning to black children to see how they respond, just in numerous examples of this sort of behavior, even racist suspect Liam Scheff, where he was talking about giving, uh, the study that he did, the story that he broke, where they were giving, uh, black children all these experimental HIV drugs to see how they would respond to it, and the drugs did nothing to improve the health of the black children, uh, the ju- the drugs only made things worse. So, it's just, it's too many examples to name of this sort of gross abuse terrorism, medical biohazard terrorism against black and non-white people worldwide. I'm even, uh, reminded of, uh, Dorothy Roberts, uh, and killing the black body, uh, going out and, and giving any sort of experimental birth control drugs to black people that had all sorts of harmful, uh, side effects and what have you, just, anything goes with the black people, anything, any, I mean, no bare minimum standards of moral conduct, and this is what should be done to black people. I think the whole book that we've read thus far in Yorugu is building up to this point, uh, and talking about the image of others, when you have, uh, classified these people, depicted these people as idiots and buffoons, savages, backwards, ignorant feces, they're worthless. Who cares if we decide to sterilize ten thousand of them? Who cares? Who cares if we sit around and watch them die from syphilis? Who cares? I, I also wanted to make sure I didn't just gloss over, 'cause I think we pa- in terms of the page where it's mentioned, I think we passed it, but Dr. Ani, she mentions a film, uh, Black Girl, was made in the nineteen sixties. I'll give you the, uh, filmmaker's name, African filmmaker, uh, Sembeen Ousmane, hope I'm saying his name correctly, Sembeen is S.E.M.B.E.N.E., uh, Sembeen Ousmane, O-U-S-M-A-N, uh, and the film is Black Girl. It is available online, uh, you can check it out on YouTube, uh, and I think it's probably on some other sites as well, but you can check it out. Uh, it's basically like The Help, uh, but from a black perspective, um, where you get more of how the black person feels, being in this, uh, predicament, uh, she comes from the continent and she's, uh, in France, uh, working in the house as a servant for these white people. I don't wanna give out the whole story, but definitely different to see a film made like this from a black perspective. You can check it out online, it's in French, so make sure that you get the one with the, uh, subtitles, for sure. I guess if you want another book about how the, the medical aspect of, uh, bioterrorism against black people, another book would be Acres of Skin, excellent re- very gruesome, where they took prisoners and experimented on them, all sorts of white people, uh, military-industrial complex came in and experimented on them, uh, just random cosmetic companies, deodorant companies, uh, just said, ooh, ooh, look at all these black people that we can take advantage of, ooh, uh, and just had a blast, this was going on, this was going on while the Tuskegee study was still going on. This was in, uh, mostly in the Homsberg prison population, this specific example, but the book is Acres of Skin, Acres of Skin. I thought about seeing if we could get that author on the program. Okie doke, um, moving forward, I'm keeping my eye out to see if folks, uh, have questions or comments that they wanna get in, uh, as we roll. Also, with the AIDS thing, uh, I'm not skipping over that information, because I do think it's, uh, it's great, the info that she provides, but I'm, I am reminded, Dr. Nancy Turner Banks and Mr. Curtis Cost, uh, they have both been guests on the program, and they have both written books and done extensive lecturing on their belief that there is no such thing as AIDS, that white people have not been able to isolate, and say conclusively and provide evidence that such a thing as HIV causes what they are terming AIDS. Uh, you can check out their works, uh, Dr. Nancy Turner Banks, uh, her book, uh, Diamonds, Opium Empire and AIDS. Uh, Mr. Curtis Cost, uh, Vaccines Are Dangerous, you can check out his website, uh, Dr. Nancy Turner Banks, you can check out her broadcast when she was with us, uh, in September of two thousand and ten, uh, but they have commented extensively, uh, that there is no such thing as AIDS, that white people have just, uh, used this, this is, is total, uh, racist propaganda, and particularly a smear campaign against black people, uh, saying, I think, what you consistently hear now is not that it's the quote-unquote AIDS community, but it's black people that have the explosive AIDS population, in particular, black females, and Dr. Marimba Ani, she touches on that, uh, in the book, but that, I definitely wanted to mention their work, she can, you can check out both of their programs in the archives, you can check out, get their books, uh, and read them, Dr. Nancy Turner Banks and Mr. Curtis Cost, both black people. Right on, uh, moving forward, this is on page four, four thirty-nine, where am I at right now, four thirty-nine, top of the page, uh, and she touches on this in the book, Dr. Ani, that's right in line with what I just said. Uh, "The association was clearly made between AIDS and sexual promiscuity. The interference, the, excuse me, the inference was that African culture in general, and the practice of polygamy in particular, was condoned sexual promiscuity, as well as undisciplined behavior with regard to sexual relations. It does not matter that polygamy, polygyny, is not the predominant form of marriage in Africa, nor that it involves a controlled situation of sexual relations. It does not matter that the African value system placed on having children does not raise the degree of sexual promiscuity. Africans also value stable family situations that provide cultural and emotional support for children. It does not matter that traditional African culture is an extremely disciplined, compared with contemporary American society, morally ordered, kin-based, and spiritually based None of these realities that abound in anthropological descriptions were made visible. Instead, a white woman was shown teaching a co- a coeducational group of fifteen-year-old Africans how to use condoms. It does not matter that both homosexual and heterosexual prostitution were introduced by Europeans into Africa, or that moral discipline breaks down with Europeanization. The conclusion reached was that since it would be difficult, for all of the reasons listed above, for European experts to communicate with the afflicted Africans, so that their quote-unquote "behavior" could be modified through an understanding of the problem, AIDS could be expected to spread at an alarming rate throughout Africa." And I would just tie that in to what Dr. Banks and Mr. Curtis Cost are saying, uh, that you can just implant the idea that there should be an expectation of these black people to be dying in mass numbers, like, not hundreds of thousands, but dying by the millions. And then when they do start dying, you know, it can be anything. We can just go and infect them with any old drug, any old disease, anything that we've concocted in a lab, and then when people start dying and getting sick, could it just be that we polluted the water? That's one of the things Liam Scheff talks about. Just having polluted water can have a huge deleterious impact on your health and quality of life. Might not be quote-unquote AIDS at all, it could just be that we've contaminated the water and dumped all sorts of waste and toxic chemicals, uh, on the continent of Africa, which has totally, uh, had a corrosive impact on the health of black people on the continent, and we'll just say, no, it's not toxic waste, it's AIDS. They're just HIV-positive, 'cause they're running around, having sex with everybody, and eating monkeys, and having sex with monkeys, and what are you gonna do? Eh, just dumb niggers. Moving forward, this is on page, just flipping the page really, page four forty, I'm gonna read four forty to four forty-one, four forty to four forty-one, and she's talking about, so you have context, Ted Koppel- Ted Koppel suspected racist. I don't, I don't watch TV every day, so I don't know. Maybe he's still hosting Nightline, but I think he used to host Nightline or a news program on ABC. And they would have like roundtable discussions on different issues. And apparently, one of the issues they were talking about was AIDS. So this is 440, second paragraph. Ted Koppel raised the question, "You talk about polygamy in Africa, but there is casual sex in the United States." I thought this was a great point, Dr. Ani, made. Note the incorrect association between polygamy and casual sex. Silverman never answered Koppel's implied question, but what he did say parallels the position taken by medical establishment as far back as 1913 with regard to black people. Silverman said, "I didn't say we wouldn't have some problems. There are inner-city youths, code black people, the minorities, the blacks and Hispanics who must come to grips with what we are saying and the drug addicts. The message is clear, just as it was in 1932 when the Tuskegee Experiment was initiated. Control comes with education and change. European-American male homosexuals can be educated. Blacks and Latinos cannot. AIDS among male homosexuals will be contained. AIDS among blacks and Latinos will spread. Magically, everything is reversed. The percentage of known AIDS cases is highest amongst male homosexuals. But in the future, we can expect it to be highest amongst blacks and Latinos across the board. If AIDS is associated with sexual promiscuity, undisciplined behavior, cultural difference..." Difference from what? "...and ignorance, then what does this imply about blacks and Latinos? People of African descent are being set up as the victims who victimize themselves, who because of their own inadequacies can expect to be ravaged by a killer disease. In 1913, according to James Jones, the American Social Hygiene Association took the position that social hygiene for whites rested on the assumption that attitudinal changes could produce behavioral changes. A single standard of high moral behavior could be produced by molding sexual attitudes through moral education. later, it allowed the United States government to watch black people die of syphilis and to allow it to spread. In the 1980s, the stage was set for AIDS to be understood as an African disease that spreads amidst sexual promiscuity, ignorance, and drug abuse. With this understanding, the scenario of suffering and death of our people will appear to make sense, no matter how much it may be lamented. The latest word from the experts is that Africans have a blood factor, GPC, that makes them more susceptible. This can be said even though initially AIDS among Europeans outnumbered AIDS among Africans by 10 to 1. Now the ratio is much closer. Already, the AIDS disinformation is being used to discriminate against Africans. In an article entitled "AIDS: Racist Myths, Hard Facts", correspondent David Dixon says the following. "Some have complained bitterly that the suspicion that Africans have a higher chance of carrying the virus that populations of other continents is already used as a covert form of racist discrimination. For example, in many countries, African students complain that they are being made to the target of restrictions and health requirements that are not being imposed on other nationals. On April 20, 1990, 100,000 African Haitians demonstrated in New York City protesting the fact that they were not being allowed to donate blood to their relatives." And I can substantiate, this is ongoing. I talked to African students, they were from the continent, who were here in Washington State. And they were saying that they were subjected to a lot of the same degrading racist health screenings and being asked all these crazy questions about their sexual lifestyle and, and just being made to strip for some racist doctor and to get a microscope and go all into their vaginal area. Same racist trifling behavior. This is ongoing. I mean, this is stuff that I'm talking about like now. She's talking about things that were happening 20 years ago. I'm talking about stuff that's happening right now. Same racist view of black people worldwide. Wouldn't care if they're coming from the Caribbean, the continent, Brooklyn, whatever the case may be. Moving forward, I'll check again, see if we have any questions while we're rolling. Brooklyn caller's line is still open if you have anything. And folks, if you're all interested in dialing in, it's 760-569-7676. And the code is 564-943. Okay, moving forward. As I just said, I thought this was very important. It reminded me of one of the sections that I feel like I've neglected a little bit with regards to what they call environmental racism. We haven't really done programs addressing that, and I think that is extremely important worldwide and even just if you're talking on a national level, just in the States. I know when I lived in the Bay Area, there were consistent articles, reports documenting that black people, particularly black people in San Francisco, the areas where they lived had a much higher concentration of dumps, landfills, where any sort of toxic material will be located. And this is a worldwide pattern. This is something I definitely want to have some programs addressing, because again, I mean, if we're gonna sit around, if white people want to sit around and have all these conversations about "AIDS", and this being now a black disease and black females, the highest rate of HIV/AIDS patients in this area of the world, then we definitely should be talking about toxic waste and white people taking all of their unhealthful chemicals and trash, where they went around and destroyed the environment and come up with all of this radioactive material and everything else and decide the best pace, the best place to dump all of this material is wherever black people happen to be. And I think Professor Vanelia Randall, she was a guest on the program. She's been on more than once. She was first a guest in August of 2009, way, way back. And then she was a guest again the early part of 2011. And I think I want to have her on again to discuss all the hubbub over what they're calling Obamacare. At any rate, in her book, Dying While Black, she said, "One of the best predictors above anything else, income, anything else that you want to talk about, one, or excuse me, the single best predictor with regards to whether or not there would be a landfill or some sort of waste site in a particular area is the percentage of black people that reside there, irrespective of income", which again, goes to totally destroy any myths. The people that want to talk, "Oh, it's class. We're not bringing in the money issue, it's class." Not at all. That has absolutely nothing to do it. Doesn't matter whether you make $50 an hour, doesn't matter whether you make minimum wage, whether you make $5,000 an hour, just being in an area where there are mostly black people. Higher percentage of black and non-white people, that right there will determine... Oh, looks like a great spot for us to dump all of our chemical toxic waste. Put it over there with the niggers and hopefully that'll kill off a good, you know, 20% of them over the next 10 years. Again, to be expected, this is what happens to non-white people. And I mean, they really do this on the continent of Africa. I, we'll hit the book. This is on page 446. She's just citing, this is research from Donovan Marks, Donovan Marks. She's just citing some of the tidbits to give you some details about all this. Although socioeconomic status plays an important role in the location of commercial hazardous waste facilities, race is the leading factor. I feel like I just said that. Three out of five of the largest commercial hazardous waste landfills in the United States are located in mostly black or Hispanic communities. These landfills account for 40% of the nation's estimated landfill space. It's only what they say. I think 12% of the country is black. Three out of five black and Hispanic Americans live in communities with one or more uncontrolled toxic waste sites. Three out of five, that would be 60%. 60% of the total black population live in communities with one or more uncontrolled toxic waste sites. Cities with large black populations like St. Louis, Houston, Cleveland, Chicago, Pam, Atlanta, hmm, eh, no surprise there, and Memphis have the largest numbers of uncontrolled toxic waste sites. Now, I wonder how many people who are listening to the program right now reside in one of the cities that I just named. Los Angeles has more Hispanics living in communities with uncontrolled toxic waste sites than any other metropolitan area in the US. The higher the concentration of Hispanics in an area of the city, the higher the concentration of uncontrolled waste in the same area. About half of all Asian Pacific Islanders and Native Americans live in communities with uncontrolled waste sites. First-world countries are considered garbage dumps by Europeans. We are, after all, for them, cultural other, garbage. She goes on, this is again, listing from Donovan Marks. Nigeria, between August 1987 and May of 1988, almost 4,000 tons of toxic waste were dumped in Koko, Nigeria. As a result, people of this small port town have seen a corresponding increase in the number of cholera patients and premature births. Guinea, February 1988, a shipment of garbage and incinerator ash from Philadelphia, which had been previously rejected by Panama and Haiti, was dumped on Casa Island, a short distance offshore from the capital, Concrey. Reportedly, it caused trees on the island to turn brown and die. South Africa, the segregated townships and rural homelands in which Africans are forced to live under the system of apartheid, white supremacy, are targeted for both international and South African government dumping. American Sinamid exports 100 tons of mercury waste each year to Thor Chemicals in Koto Ridge, South Africa. The mercury has contaminated nearby marshes and the Manguini River, which flows down into the Valley of a Thousand Hills, where the local population uses water for drinking, cooking, and washing. Haiti, in October 1987, the Haitian government issued an import permit for fertilizer to the Kian Sea. The ship's cargo, however, consisted of 13,476 tons of toxic municipal incinerator ash from Philadelphia. There are many more examples of this pattern of behavior, including punitive measures taken by the European Economic Community and other such European nationalistic organizations when we refuse to be used as garbage pails for European waste. The Environment Community Development and Race Project, directed by Dana A. Austin, is supporting a resistance movement. Dana A. Austin has since passed. This book was published in 1994. She has since passed away, but other folks have taken up the mantle and are continuing her efforts. As I said, that is one area very important that I definitely want to correct our omission, not touching on the environmental racism, because I mean, if you're talking about health and eating the correct foods and what you put in your body and, you know, getting clean water and what have you, man, all of that can be easily compromised just by having white people come and dump whatever they want in your water source, in the land. That stuff gets in the ground. Now, your food source is contaminated. You go through all that work to try to grow your own food, organic produce, get away from the GMOs, the soil gets contaminated because they're dumping god knows what into the ground, and that stuff leaches. It's not like it's just gonna stay contained in one area. We're talking about clean water. Again, trying to go through all that to get clean water. You don't want the fluoride and chlorine and all that other garbage contaminating your water source. All that goes out the window when they come and dump whatever it is in the water. And then if you are eating animals, you're not doing the vegetarian vegan thing, what are the animals eating that you consume? If you're eating chicken or poultry, whatever the case may be, fish, the water source is contaminated, the soil is contaminated. Whatever they're eating is gonna be contaminated. Major, major problem. And I hope we can spend some time addressing that. A person that dialed in from California, your line should be open.
Hey Gus, I just wanted to add that if you remember in Somalia, when this whole thing with the so-called pirates started, rapper Kanaan came out and he talked about what was really going on in Somalia. And one of the reasons he said that the Somalis were attacking these European ships or American ships, basically the ships that white people ran, was because they were dumping toxic waste. And I'm not sure if it was nuclear waste, but it was definitely toxic waste in the Indian Ocean off of the coast of Somalia. And what it was doing was killing fish and it was causing a difficulty for fishermen and for their food supply. So, the black people of Somalia that they were calling pirates took it into their own hands to go and counter the ships and take them over because of what white people were doing to destroy their environment. And now, you know, the constant story white people give you is that this is going on, you know, these people are wretched criminals and we have to protect these waters at all costs, but they don't tell you that they're dumping poison and all kind of garbage in the water.
Excellent point from Pumpkin. Excellent point. Hmm, absolutely. Again, I could just point to Liam Scheff. He strongly suspects him of being a racist, but he talked about that. You start contaminating people's water supply, man, you can erode health quickly for a large number of people, even if they're not drinking, even if you don't necessarily directly contaminate the water that they are drinking. If it gets into the soil, if they're eating whatever livestock or animals, if they're eating what have you, crops, it can have a huge impact on a whole segment of people. He was saying, "Nothing impacts quality of health like having clean access to clean water." Nothing. And I mean, this is a pattern. I mean, I'm sure it's only gotten worse from what they were doing in the 80s and 90s. And again, it goes back to what I said earlier. When I see those green pieces, really any white people who are jumping up and down and whining, "Oh, let's recycle and, oh, we want to be good to the end." Get out of here, man. I see the way, man and woman, the way that you all treat and degrade black people worldwide. Get out of here. I'm not recycling anything. Not that I'm not about being a custodian for the planet, all good, but first and foremost, number one objective has got to be neutralizing the cesspoolians, as Dr. Cambon labels them, racist man, racist woman, racist child. See, did Pumpkin or, I call in Brooklyn, did either one of y'all have anything else?
Well, one more thing. If you get a chance to watch a documentary on Coca-Cola, you'll see that they're also destroying the environment. It's somewhere in Central or South America. Actually, India as well. It's something they do with the water that the locals use. It sucks all the oxygen out of the water, thus killing the fish. A lot of the local people who are non-white have, you know, had adverse health effects because of it. If you look at the corporation of Monsanto and them selling these genetically-modified hybrid seeds or genetically-modified seeds to Indian farmers, you have the epidemic of Indian farmer suicide over there because it's permanently ruined their crops. And what the white people do is give them these crops or these seeds, they sell them to them. And they promise the Indian farmers that it's gonna make their crops resistant, you know, to pests and things like that. Now, these are crops they've been growing for thousands of years and they're native to their land. And so what happens is, when it's time to harvest, they don't get those results. The crops end up being awful. And then when the Indian farmers don't want them anymore, they patent, the seeds are patented. So, if they wanted to, they couldn't come back, you know, just keep planting the same seeds. They have to buy new seeds from Monsanto every season. What Monsanto will do is send a representative throughout their fields. So even if they say, "We don't want Monsanto crops anymore", if any Monsanto seed crops up, even without them farming it, the Monsanto corporation will then go and file a lawsuit for, I forget if it's copyright, trademark, something, or patent violation, but they file a lawsuit against these poor Indian farmers. And of course, they can't afford to fight it in the fight of corporation that big. And they end up losing farms that have been in their families for generations and end up in poverty and committing suicide. There's an activist female who speaks about this. Her name is something like, I don't know if it's Zanda Shiva. She's a very articulate, just, oh, she's a bad, bad woman. She's an Indian female, though. But if you, if you look up Indian suicides, Indian farmer suicides in Monsanto, you'll just see that they have a global habit of doing this to people. Going in, taking over the water, water that indigenous people have been using for thousands of years, giving it to corporations so that they have control over the, you know, natural rivers and waters that flow, so that non-white people can't water their crops or feed their animals or themselves. It's just, it's really trifling. It's like some kind of alien bloodsucker parasitic behavior that they have concerning the environment, where they have to... that they have concerning the environment, where they have to control everything on this planet and destroy it. It's pretty consistent from everything that I've heard. It's definitely global.
Uh, hey, um, I got separated for a minute, but, yeah, it makes me think of something that my tempted brother was, thought he was sharing about Coca-Cola, like factories, like when they, you know, they have Coca-Cola factories in all these different parts of the world, like everywhere. And you see, like, you know, they're producing, maybe it was said on the cows also or something at some point, but they're producing, you know, this, you know, carbonated sugary drink, right, that's supposedly the product they're producing, Coca-Cola, it's sugary, it's carbonated, you drink it, it's, there's all these crazy plumes of, you know, all this like, these gas clouds, out of, you know, the side, like pumping out into like, you know, the water stream, and, you know, some solid waves somewhere they have to get rid of, it's like, what are they really producing, you know, it's like, like you say, they're like, it's like terraforming, but really, it's not good for them either, but it's worse for us. So it's like, they're not really, I mean, it almost seems like Coca-Cola isn't really the main product, if, that they're producing, if they're producing what they're calling Coca-Cola, it's like they're producing white supremacy. So, it's like unhealthy, but it's worse for us than it is for them, or I don't know. I guess they have more ability to buffer themselves from the effects of the political distinctions they make and everything.
Well, you know, in that Coca-Cola documentary, in one of the Spanish-speaking countries they're in, I think it was Colombia, there was an issue with some of the workers, I guess there were people protesting, you know, not being treated correctly in the company, I don't remember if it had to do with work hours or just general humane treatment, but people started getting murdered who worked for the unions. And there was some suspicion that Coca-Cola, that the corporation might have been behind it. And then in the same documentary, they talk about Martin Luther King having called for a boycott of Coca-Cola back in the 50s or 60s, I think, for practicing racism.
Just sticking on the Coke theme, I don't think, I definitely think we would benefit from not consuming the sodas, so-called beverages of racist man, racist woman, not in our best health interest, or economic interest. Dick Gregory, he was saying, and I believe it was Coke, I could be incorrect, it might have been another cola, but I think it was Coke, but he was saying that they had a practice of going into white residential areas, taking the Coca-Cola that was about to expire, they would take it back to the factory, take the label off, and put a new label on it, and then they would take it to the black areas and sell expired Coca-Cola. Compounding the issue was that this cola, and I think it was Coke, I have to double check, it might have been a different product, but I think it was Coke, but compounding the problem with this was that the cola, when it expires, it becomes a mild toxin. Now, you put that in quotes, I don't know what mild toxin is, but it becomes a mild toxin, and they were just purposely, and they'd been doing this for a while before they got caught, just to compound that. I checked, there's several documentaries on Coca-Cola, and it seems like at least two or three of them are dealing with their mistreatment of non-white people. One of them is the case, The Coca-Cola Case, you can watch this online, the other one is The Cost of Coke, but there's several, but at least those two, they both seem to deal with their abuse of non-white people around the world, Coca-Cola Company, which is headquartered in, of course, Atlanta. No coincidence, I suspect.
Gus, there's also a documentary about Jamaica, and it shows what goes on behind the scenes, you know, what the tourists don't see, and it shows the exploitation of non-white people there in the environment, and particularly with the banana crops and other things, but how they flood the market even there with imported, underpriced bananas, so that farmers in Jamaica can't even make a living producing their own crops, because they can't even compete on their own island with their own crops, against the crops that white people are importing.
No surprise, no surprise with, I know with Monsanto as well, with those Terminator seeds, they leak, that's the thing with a lot of this, when you racist man, racist woman, they try to have control over everything, including the air, the elements, nature, and it's just not possible, those Terminator seeds, they are so damaging for everything that you all have already stated, but even if you're not using them, if you farm using the correct natural seeds, those Terminator seeds can infect other crops, so that, you know, people that are using the correct seeds, those, if someone is farming with Terminator seeds in nearby environment, that can contaminate their crop, and so they end up having, you know, Terminator seeds in effect in their crop as well. Just long-range warfare that white people have in terms of just disrupting all forms of life, nature, the planet, non-white people, global disruption of life, that's what, excuse me, white people, they're all about, the acelia of white people, I think she says that in the book repeatedly, destruction, control, domination, white people are all about.
Let me just add, and then they, and then they, when, when the crops get infected with the Terminator seeds, then Monsanto uses that as grounds to sue the person who they infect, who is crops they infected. That's another layer.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, absolutely, absolutely. As I said, it's a big issue, big issue worldwide, I guess that's the type of thing that I guess you wouldn't see, it's not as popular in talking about how this works out worldwide and other parts of the planet, but definitely something I wanna try to make sure we get some attention to, get more information, get more information out. Even here, the local areas, people were, Bruce Fahn was sending some of the links about Inchester, Pennsylvania, where black communities suffering from the dump, them dumping all sorts of waste material in their area, and how that was impacting black people having all these high rates of asthma and respiratory problems because of the chemicals that they've done, purposely dumping these materials there. So, definitely wanna make sure that we spend some time getting more information about, getting more information out about this, I do think it is extremely important. See, this is 447, this is 447, bottom of the page. See, this is subtitled, all this is chapter eight, everything we're talking about today is gonna be chapter eight, very big, very long chapter, lots of great information though. This is bottom of 447, subtitled, "Theories of Euro-Caucasian Behavior: The Question of Cause." "It is because the dynamics of race and ethnicity are so intimately related to the European power drive that I prefer to particularize the European commitment to white nationalism or white supremacy as a dominant component of Western European nationalism. White supremacy can never be reduced to the mere definition of peoples and cultures in terms of race. Race or group consciousness, which might logically result in the desire to remain separate and distinct, is qualitatively different from an ideology that requires the physical presence and dehumanization of other peoples for the acting out of a power relationship in which the actor has supreme control over those people. The connotive striving for power has a motivating factor, excuse me, the connotive striving for power as motivating factor here becomes the crucial element," I think that is important enough, I'll reread the last couple sentences there. "Race or group consciousness, which might logically result in the desire to remain separate and distinct, is qualitatively different from an ideology that requires the physical presence and dehumanization of other peoples for the acting out of a power relationship in which the actor, white people, has supreme control over those peoples. Let us broaden the terms. The power drive is placed in the formulative and originating process of European culture. The cultural other becomes a creation of that power drive as valued behavior. Race, in quotes, the concept that ambiguously links culture with the gene pool and color, is then one of the determining factors in a cultural identification, and therefore a definitive component in the European conception of the cultural other. The value of any theory of white supremacy from an African-centered perspective lies in its ability to lay bare the dynamics and centricity of the power relationship in European ideology and behavior." That is 447 to 448. She takes about the next 20, 25 pages or so to kinda share her thoughts on some different theories with regards to racism, white supremacy, and why it exists. She examines, really, when I was looking at this, I was saying, wow, this, I had been saying, hit list for the cows, a lot of people that have been on the program, Michael Bradley, Joel Covell, obviously Dr. Frances Cress Welsing, Richard King, Cheyenne Antadia, another cowbell ring, just going through some of their theories with regards to why racism, white supremacy exists, why do white people function in this manner. I don't wanna take the whole time to read all of these different people's theories and her thoughts, pros, cons, on the theories if she thinks they are valid or not. I will kinda share a few of the thoughts on a couple of the theories, particularly, I would say with Joel Covell and Michael Bradley, as they have been on the cows, you can just visit the archives if you wanna hear more. If you read sections in the book, you can compare and contrast with what she has to say about Covell's theory, Bradley's theory, with what they had to say when they were on the program. I know one thing that I am reminded, I was thinking that I should have made this a sound clip, but maybe it would be best as homework. Michael Bradley, when he was on the program in May of 2009, one of our first programs, author of The Iceman Inheritance, when he was on the program, this is not in his book, but when he was on the program, he said that he believes that white people are dedicated to the practice of racism above and beyond anything else, and that they would blow the planet up as opposed to lose their grip on the practice of racism, white supremacy. And I thought that was an extremely important point, I have referenced it continually for the last two, three years, and as I said, it's not in the book. I don't know why he didn't include that, maybe he hadn't come to that conclusion at the time when he published The Iceman Inheritance, although I doubt it, but I thought that was a really important point that he got out on that program, you can check it out in the archives. I'll read a tad, and looks like we've only really got two people who have been, looks like we've only got a couple people who are chiming in. Again, my suspicions about whether or not people are keeping up with the reading, so we will most likely not be doing the full three hours today, since folks are not chiming in to participate, I'll read a few more segments that I thought were important, and hopefully we can wrap up. If you did do the reading, and you wanna call in to share any thoughts, observations, or if you have questions, definitely dial in, 760-569-7676, and the code is 564-943-POUND. I will share a few, a little bit of what she had to say about Joel Covell and his theory, you can get his book, Racism: A Psychoanalysis, Racism: A Psychoanalysis, Joel Covell. Again, he was on the program in October of 2010. This is on 456, 456, where she's talking about Covell. "And so we have a fascinating, if not totally satisfying, explanation of European behavior. Covell suggests a cause for racist behavior and a reason for the achievement of power, but neither a cause nor a reason for the inordinate desire for power over others. He seems to assume that all human groups desire power, but that the genesis of the West is to have discovered the best way of achieving, excuse me, he seems to assume that all human groups desire power, but that the genius of the West is to have discovered the best way of achieving it, or put another way, to have been fortunately endowed with white skin. From an African-centered perspective, this explanation is not acceptable, since it embraces the values that are supposedly under criticism. This brings us directly to the limitations of Covell's analysis. He has universalized the particular. It is ironic, but not surprising, for this is a typically European mistake weapon. I choose the latter, I don't think it is an accident, I think it is a weapon, a tactic." The penchant for universalizing is a characteristic of European ideology discussed in chapter 10. Covell leads us towards a piercing indictment of European culture in terms of the depth to which its racialist ideology reaches. Indeed, he is arguing that the success of the culture depends on the symbols of white racism. But the pessimism with which his book concludes is a result of having dug a hole from which it is impossible to escape. Why should Europeans want to yield power? If their racism, aggression, and materialism assure their power, then these forms of behavior must be maintained. And I agree, I don't think that's pessimism, I think that is just being truthful. As I said, Michael Bradley said the same thing, I think it's just about acknowledging white people are not going to voluntarily discontinue the practice of white terrorism. It would be foolish for them to do so, it has benefited them, and I think many, for many white people, they perceive that the only reason or the only way they will be able to maintain existence, the individuals who say that they are white, is by the continued practice of white supremacy. So, I don't look at that as pessimistic, I just look at that as, hey, let's be honest about the problem that we're trying to solve, and what will be required of us, the victims of racism, black people, non-white people, what will be required of us to permanently solve this problem? White people. This is on 457, bottom of the page, she's continuing her thoughts on Joel Covell. "The importance of Covell's analysis is, number one, that it connects white racism to capitalist aggression. Number two, that it leads to the conclusion that since white racism generates power, Europeans will never cease to be racist, and most impressively and significantly, when critiqued from an African-centered perspective. Number three, European attitudes and cultural behaviors towards other racial, cultural groups are linked ethologically or psychoculturally to rationalism, or to what Covell calls pure thought. In our terms, it lodges white racialist ideology comfortably within the European Udomo Wazo, while the European Udomorojo dictates white racist behavior. It is important to understand that rationalism does not mean reasonableness in terms of African and other majority conceptual systems. European rationalism, again, so clearly elaborated in Platonic thought, is predicated on the separation of reason and emotion, the will being placed at the service of the now-isolated, uncontaminated reason." I will stop there. In my view, she has a pretty solid critique of Covell and some of the problems, I would even say, some of the areas where racism, white supremacy is evidenced in his work, he is a white person, so I would of course have to suspect that he is a racist, and that that would be manifested in anything that he writes, says about racism, white supremacy, and you can, you know, investigate what he had to say when he was on the program. Let's see, this is on, moving forward now, she does break down some of her thoughts on Dr. Frances Cress Welsing, her theory of white genetic annihilation. Think she, it seems as though she thinks a lot of what Dr. Welsing has to say is valid and makes sense, I know she references Dr. Welsing frequently throughout the book, so I thought it seemed like there was, there seems to be a lot of overlap between what they're saying. Moving forward to Michael Bradley, what she has to say about another white person's theory on why white people practice racism, white supremacy. For those who do not know, again, Michael Bradley, the author of The Iceman Inheritance, kind of a quick summary of his work, he basically postulates that the reason that white people practice racism, white supremacy, is related to the fact that they were in colder environs, where it was a much more hostile climate. where it was a much more hostile climate, much less conducive to having a lot of children, children would be looked at as a burden for white people, the term sexual dimorphism, plane's going overhead, sexual dimorphism, meaning white males and white females phenotypically look different, having more hair, just different features, so that there would be more animosity, they would look at one another and not see similarity, but would look at one another with saying, oh, this person is different. They're different enough that I don't even know if we're related, and that there would be a hostility, a suspicion and an aggression, and that this prevented them or made it complicated for them to relate in a more healthful manner, for them to have reduced sexual enjoyment because of that hostility and distrust between white men and white women, which he feel, Michael Bradley, he asserts that this is the reason for why there is such rampant sexism from white men to white women, why that's such an endemic part of white culture, the sexism, degrading of the feminine principle, females in general. And he asserts that this also explains why that hostility is there with regards to black people. They were in an environment that was not as open to vegetation, crops, there were much fewer resources, so it encouraged violent, aggressive behavior, not sharing, being in competition with other white people who were in that environment. And when they left that environment, this only increased when they saw non-white people who certainly looked different from white people, that this tendency towards violent, aggressive behavior towards others, difference, was only increased, multiplied from white people. That's kind of a quick rundown of his theory, not getting into all of the intricacies of it. You all can, you know, take your time. Some of the folks say they are reading it now, read the book, go back and hear what he had to say in the archive. You can hear what Dr. Marimba Ani has to say when you, when you read the book. I'm skipping to four, four sixty-two. See here. "Perhaps the most unique aspect of Bradley's argument is his conclusion that European values and behavior towards others may be casually tied to European sexual, sensual life. For Bradley, the sexual sensual is the key to combating the anti-human monoculture that is Western civilization. And yet his explanation is not of the Freudian mold. In fact, it was seen to contradict Freud's Slavish commitment to supposed universal phases of psycho-intellectual development, a model that paints Europeans as normal rather than pathological. Bradley's theory is creative and speculative. He is accurate in his identification of European pathology, but unfortunately, like Covell, he assumes certain European conceptions of reality. Time, in quotes, so important, a part of his theory, is lineal time. It is not a discovery, but the invention of a materialist understanding. Ironically, Bradley reveals his own ignorance of the spiritualistic and cosmological worldviews to which he says Europeans need expose themselves. The African philosophical conception of ancestor communion transcends lineal time and allows people to avoid the limitations of their mortal and finite existences. African exists, Africans exist through cosmic and sacred time, both in the past and the future, as they experience the present. In fact, conception is not lineal, but cyclical, spiraling. Having children becomes an honor of participating symbolically in the primordial act of creation. It is a spiritual necessity, a cultural obligation, since birth represents the continuance of the group and of the self, our own immortality. Our ancestors and origins are repeated in sacred symbols through which we unite with them, not compete with them. Such ignorance leads Bradley to a misunderstanding of religion, or at least of spiritual concepts. He correctly says that all religions have a concept of time beyond birth and death. But because he again perceives, through European eyes, he understands religion as a symptom that man has claimed a territory which is larger than a single life. His language is the language of the European. For us, the religious sense would be the recognition that we are indeed claimed by a universe that extends beyond the finiteness of our single physical selves. This is where the concept of the soul comes in, a concept that Bradley never mentions. Our spirituality is the recognition of spiritual connectedness beyond lineal, ordinary, profane time. This recognition energizes our humanity, influences our priorities, and prevents the alienation that Europeans experience." On four sixty-two, what I've just been reading, sliding, this is on, this is on four sixty-six, the final person that she, final scholar whose theory she breaks down, Richard King, black male, Richard King, and she deconstructs his theory as to why racist man, racist woman practice racism, white supremacy. Again, you can read the text, you can certainly research his material if you would like. More information with regards to what he has to say, this is just kind of quick analysis, obviously not getting into as much depth as you would if you go and check out his material on your own. I'm sure he has lots of stuff out there. Do your research if you, if you're interested. I'm going to read a few pages here so you can get an idea, and we'll even get a sound clip from Breaking Bad. As I said, I remembered, your, your brain is a powerful tool, you can remember information, even when you're not aware that you remember it, it tends to stick. The brain is an extremely powerful tool. We'll get our Breaking Bad clip in after I read this material, because it just, this was the first episode, when I get to the clip, this was the first episode of Breaking Bad that I saw, which is why I think it has such importance. At any rate, some of, if you are interested, Richard King, you can check out African Origins of Psychology, it's a lecture he gave. I suspect it might be online if you do some digging. Again, the lecture is African Origins of Psychobiology, excuse me, African Origins of Psychobiology. And then you can also check out, this is a publication, African Origins of Biological Psychiatry. One more time, African Origins of Biological Psychiatry, those out there who might be interested in doing some more research on Mr. Richard King. I am on page four sixty-six of Yorugoo. This is again, all chapter eight. Got a cramp in my neck. Second, that is uncomfortable. "According to Webster's Dictionary, the pineal gland resembles a pine cone in shape and unknown function. Being present in the brain of all vertebrates, having a cranium, it is believed to be vestigial. But for Richard King, the pineal is not only quite functional, but the key to biological and conscious life itself. How does this relate to European behavior? The pineal gland secretes melatonin, which activates the vitricular release of MSH, melanocyte-stimulating hormone. It is in the melanocytes that melanin is produced. Melanin is somewhat analogous to chlorophyll in plants. While chlorophyll allows photosynthesis to occur, or the transference of the sun's energy into food, melanin in animals takes the sun's energy and makes it useful energy for the body. While the growth of plants is directed towards physical sunlight, King contends that the growth of human beings is directed towards higher states of consciousness. This would imply that somehow melanin is related to highly-developed states of consciousness or spiritual light. The human form, he says, is attracted toward meaning. We are familiar with melanin in relation to the pigmentation of skin, but we are not taught about the relationship between the skin and the brain. The ectoderm, or outer layer of the skin, is where melanin is produced, in the pre-fetus. In the core of the brain are found twelve black nuclei, or melanated centers. This outer layer of the blastula, the pre-fetus, invaginates to form the spinal column, the end of which balloons out becoming the brain. The twelfth of these centers, and therefore the highest, is the locus corollius, corollius, excuse me, locus corollius. King says that they are related to spirituality and consciousness, and also allow human beings to access to the world of dreams, thereby learning from ancestral experiences. In animals, other humans, excuse me, in animals other than humans, fewer of these centers will be pigmented, therefore their degree of consciousness is affected. Melatonin is released from the pineal gland during darkness periodically between eleven PM and seven AM. It induces sleep and increases the amount of melanin production. In King's term, it unlocks the door to the unconscious. At the same time, heat and sunlight cause melanocytes to produce melanin, so that internally, melanin, melanin production is regulated by light and dark, hormonal secretion, and externally by heat. Pineal melatonin induces puberty, while King maintains melatonin is also related to fertility. Certainly, world population figures and relative fertility rates bear out this contention. In addition, it seems that melanin is essential to the life process. The primary and fundamental atom in all biological systems is carbon, which is black. All organic matter comes from a carbon atom. Melanin in the early blastula develops into the spinal cord, the central nervous system, a significant part of the brain, as well as parts of the skin, retina of the eyes, the lack of melanin severely impairs vision, the hair and the ears. The cerebral spinal fluid made in the brain that helps to regulate various glands in the body contains melanin. The chemistry of melanin is that melanocytes contain tyrosine, an amino acid, and an enzyme, Melanin is made when tyrosinease and oxygen cause tyrosine to convert to dopa, a precursor amine that changes to melanin. The lack of tyrosinease results in the genetic disease known as albinism, which has deleterious effect on the eyesight. Melanin in the retina protects the sensitive eye from the ultraviolet rays of the sun, just as it protects the skin. It also allows for the perception of colors. DopA is thought to be related to creative thinking and to changes in states of consciousness by the recognition of melanin production. King argues that blackness or carbon is life and is therefore divine. He says that ancient Africans understood this and called themselves by various names meaning black, such as Kemites, people of the black earth, from which the Greeks developed the word chemistry, and the Arabs' alchemy. Recognizing the special significance of their blackness, which far transcended the color of the skin, according to King, these ancient scientists studied the workings of their own minds, which they understood as being identified with their bodies, so much for the mind-body split so basic to European thought. This is what Frankfurt describes negatively as cosmic thought. According to King, the ancient Africans studied themselves until they came to understand the relationship of blackness to spirituality and inner vision, the higher levels of understanding on which synthesis occurs. For them, blackness represented the divine. In his series of works entitled The Black Dot, King supports this contention with an impressive array of references to ancient comedic texts and symbolic images, and to host, to a host of other theorists and historians. What did these early advanced scientists discover? This is all quoting from King. "These original titans found that all life came from black seed. All life was rooted in blackness. All things possessed a memory of their collective ancestors. Blackness, the universal solvent of all, was seen as the one reality from which spun the threads of the loom of life. All colors, all vibratory energies, were but a shade of black. Black was the color of the night sky, primeval ocean of outer space, birthplace and womb of the planets, stars and galaxies of the universe. Black holes were found at the center of our own galaxy and countless other galaxies. Black was the color of carbon, the key atom found in all living matter of our world. Carbon atoms linked together to form black melanin, the first chemical that could capture light and reproduce itself, the chemical key to life. And the brain itself was found to be centered around black neuromelanin. Inner vision, intuition, creative genius, and spiritual illumination were all found to be dependent upon pineal gland-blood-borne chemical messengers that controlled skin color and opened hidden door to the darkness of the collective unconscious mind, allowing the ancient priest-scientist to visualize knowledge from the timeless collective unconscious memory banks of the mind. Indeed, the black dot was found to be the hidden doorway to universal knowledge of the past, present, and future." This is back to Dr. Ani. "But what happens to Covell's theory of blackness? The blackness that is associated with the darkness of which all human beings are afraid, and the dirt about which they fantasize as they learn to control the excretion of their bowels? For King, blackness itself is, excuse me, for King, blackness is life itself, and as such is understood as divinity, the sacred force of creation. But we are taught that it is evil. How did that come to be? And is it connected, as Welsing would argue, to a reaction on the part of Europeans to their human condition, their history? Perhaps this leads to an explanation of Euro-Caucasian behavior." I will stop there. This is the sound clip I was referencing, again, Breaking Bad. I cannot tell you how much this reveals about white people. I will hush and just play the clip because I think it will connect things nicely, Breaking Bad.
Monoalkenes, diolophens, trienes, polyenes. I mean, the nomenclature alone is enough to make your head spin. But when you start to feel overwhelmed, and you will, just keep in mind that one element, carbon. Carbon is at the center of it all. There is no life without carbon, nowhere that we know of in the universe. Everything that lives, lived, will live, carbon. Carmen is carbon. Sorry, is this in principle, Carmen? Did you, no. I like to think of it, I like to think that the diamond and the woman who wears it on her finger are both formed from the same stuff. Or, say, the diamond and the man who invented it. Ah, that got your attention, right? The man who invented the diamond. All right. H. Tracy Hall, write this name down. Dr. Hall invented the first reproducible process for making synthetic diamonds. I mean, this is way back in the fifties. Now today, synthetic diamonds are used in oil drilling, electronics, multi-billion-dollar industries. Now, at the time, Dr. Hall worked for General Electric, and he made them a fortune, I mean, You want to know how GE rewarded Dr. Hall? A ten-dollar US savings bond. Anyway, a savings bond printed on carbon-based paper paid to a carbon-based man for something he made out of carbon.
So nice to have you back with us, Walt. You're looking great, by the way.
A little skinny here, which is definitely no tragedy. And then there's the hair thing.
I actually like that. That's a great look for you.
Man, I am not...
Man, I am not particularly looking forward to the next season of The Boondocks. Uh, I, you know, I don't have any beef with any of the black people who are involved with it, but just I've seen that white people have contaminated it and it's just, I'm not looking forward to it. I suspect white people are just going to continue to contaminate it and just take it away from what it was originally, which is what they standard practice, right? That's what they do, black entertainment creations, where you start out with one vision and the racists come in and change it and make it something trifling and tacky and, you know, way worse than what it was supposed to be. I am looking forward to the final season of Breaking Bad. It's supposed to be two weeks away, July fifteenth, final season. The White Family, just that little three-minute clip. And again, that's the first episode that I ever saw. I had never heard of this program. I didn't know anything about it. That was the first episode that I saw, and I'm just sitting there with my mouth on the ground. I didn't even remember every, or hey. I will say again, your brain is phenomenal. This is not anything specific to Gus. White people have studied the brain. They could probably break off some information about melanin and what it does and your memory. They have a thing called savings and learning. You do not forget anything. The only problem you have is retrieval of information at times, but you do not forget anything, and they can do experiments and show you do not forget anything. So consciously, I didn't remember that passage from Dr. Ani, but when I saw that, very first time I saw it on Breaking Bad, my mouth was on the floor. I was like, what in the world? They are talking about black people. This is from Mr. White, no less, the character who's doing all that, Mr. White. High school chemistry teacher, drug seller, murderer, racist white supremacist. I mean, you got the entire embodiment of what white people, you talk about everything. That's the crystal meth is one of the most toxic substances ever. I just saw, I think I got it from Bruce Fine. Man, you talk about some toxic waste. They, I think they said for every pound of crystal meth that is produced, it generates five pounds of toxic waste. They had a big sob story with all these white people, of course, who lost their homes and they had all these respiratory issues and skin problems and just all these different health afflictions because they bought a home where they were making crystal meth in it before. They didn't report this, they didn't know it, and they ended up having to, I think, demolish large chunks of it and rebuild. Some of the people, they just had to move. They had to get rid of the house completely. It ta- I mean, the amount of toxic waste that stuff generates is astounding, and that's what this segment, this film, this TV series is all about, making crystal meth. Anyway, that segment, you have to see it visually to really get it because as he's breaking down how carbon is the center of life as we know it in the universe, Carmen walks in, who is a non-white female, and she's dressed in all black when she comes in, gorgeous non-white female, got to get that in too. So this gorgeous non-white female walks in in all black and you hear him making the comparison. I mean, you get it linguistically, it sounds the same. She's in all black and he's saying, hey, Carmen, carbon, how about that? And then, uh, he, oh my, just everything about, I mean, I could talk about that three-minute clip and how that relates to everything we've just been talking about specifically with what Mr. King just broke down and Dr. Ani about carbon and how that relates to black people, melanin, and why white people are doing what they do, terrorizing the entire planet. One quick thing that I will get in, the comment that he made about Dr. Hall, GE and him, uh, creating these synthetic diamonds, that is true. That is true. Important thing, Dr. Hall, he was born in the area of the world known as Utah. He was a Mormon. That lets you know right there what he was all about in his worldview as it relates to black people. I also thought it was interesting that he even had a moment of sadness that this Dr. Hall, he made white people so much money with these synthetic diamonds and he didn't get compensated correctly and how they do this to black people all the time. If Dr. Hall had been a black person, ho hum, you wouldn't even know his name, it would not be any sob story, any sadness, any regrets that he was not adequately compensated for his contributions to white terrorism worldwide. Incredible, so I could talk more and more about that segment and how it relates. That's what my brain computer went haywire when I saw that and thinking, wow, this series has got to be talking a lot about racism if, this is the first time I'm seeing, and this is from season two, so this is not even at the beginning of where Breaking Bad starts. At any rate, I hope this makes sense and has been relevant and has not just been, you know, a mindless diatribe diverting us from the dialogue. Uh, we did have someone who called in, I will get your line. If anybody else has feedback, we'll check on that as well. Caller, uh, eight, eight-two-two-five, your line is open, eight-two-two-five.
Uh, greetings, can I be heard?
Loud and clear.
Uh, great, great, thank you for doing this, Gus. Um, I don't have anything necessarily, uh, on what you were just talking about, I just have anecdotes of what I, you know, I take a note on the book, what I have anecdotes of what I've been seeing in, uh, you know, culture. Uh, and, uh, it was funny as I was, uh, listening to the archives, uh, after it was recorded, you talking to, uh, Cisco Streetlove. And, uh, uh, for some reason I ended up on, uh, Yahoo Answers and somebody was, was, uh, asking a question, uh, was the Black Panthers like the black version of the KKK? No, just a stupid question. And, uh, you know, it, it's easily look-up-able, you know, you could research that and just prove it, but the guy's, uh, uh, Yahoo avatar and name was Albert Fish, uh, who you discussed was the vampire of Brooklyn. Uh, and it's just that, that trolling, the internet trolling existed before the internet, and that's just what they do. That's, you know, just looking to start from. It, it was hilarious. But I have more to share, but go ahead.
Wow. I hope people check out the document. If you don't know who Albert Fish is, definitely check that out, give you more, as Mr. Nero would say, more ammunition that you can have in your folder when you're talking about, hey, this is a pattern of behavior. Do not think that's Jerry Sandiski or Jeffrey Dahmer or whomever it happens to be. Do not think this is anomalous behavior. Albert Fish, another example that we gotta have, what would we do? We couldn't, we could not be terrorists. We couldn't be racist. We couldn't function in the way that we best love to operate on the planet if we did not have black people around to terrorize, rape, sodomize, kill, eat, not necessarily in that order. Uh, did you have more you wanted to share, sir?
Uh, yeah, um, but, uh, that also got me thinking about the, uh, when they had that little, uh, kid, uh, uh, white kid who, uh, dressed up in blackface and the parents were, you know, just apoplectic, like, ah, we don't know why, you know, black people are causing a fuss, you know, like, yeah, you do, you're trolling, you know? But, uh, also, um, get a chance, uh, check out, um, you know, Jack Black, he's got a, uh, the actor, he's got a group called Tenacious D, and they were on The Daily Show, and they, uh, this is recent, they performed a couple of songs at the end, and one of the songs, both of them are very, uh, uh, Ani-worthy, you know, just in terms of wow. And, uh, the first one was called Death Star, I believe, and it's talking about, you know, uh, getting off the planet and progress and creating the Death Star and fighting aliens and, you know, just like, it, it is so blatant, like, you know, especially in, after reading, uh, and, and divide and conquer, I think you even mentioned, it, it, it is pretty blatant. I think that the second one is about, like, uh, Christianity and, you know, uh, uh, basically, uh, the bottom line, when they get to the hook, the bottom line is we're going to beat up your beliefs or something like that. It is, it was outrageous. Um, and also, if you get the chance to check out, um, well, I don't recommend checking it out, but there's this movie, uh, called, I think it's called Lockout, where a guy has to rescue the, uh, it's like set in the future and a guy has to, uh, it's a recent movie, and the guy has to rescue the president's daughter from a, a prison in space. Now, just think about that, uh, a prison in space that they would spend the time to do that. And, uh, anyhow, her accompanying au- uh, Secret Service officer, you know, they get, uh, in trouble, suddenly they get locked in some room together, and he's black, and, uh, they discover that the earth, I mean, not the earth, but the, uh, the air is, is depleting. So this guy, he messed up everything by, uh, you know, as they set up the character, uh, by not giving up his, you know, uh, gun that he had, just to, you know, because you're supposed to hand over the guns when you go into, uh, prison as a visitor, and, and that's where it starts off the whole ride and, you know, puts him in jeopardy. He kills himself so that she has enough air to breathe. And he's, he's the one of two black people in the movie. The second one is the guy that's helping out, uh, the guy who's here to rescue her and everything, but he turns out to be the villain at the end, and then at the end he gets punched, so you only have two black people in the whole movie. And, uh, typical, typical. Uh, but I'll share more later, go ahead.
Wow. Wow. The, I haven't, I haven't seen that, uh, pro- what's the name of it again?
The Lockout?
The Lockout, okay. Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen that, but, uh, it is typical. I've seen quite a few of those, uh, black guy supposed to sacrifice yourself so that the white people, white women especially, uh, can live and thrive, uh, wouldn't want her to run out of air. Very, very typical. Um, the song you were mentioning Blackjack, or at least the first one, uh, Death Star, that probably is a, uh, Star Wars reference as well, and I think both Dr. Wellesley and Dr. Ani reference, uh, that, and I think even Cisco, it is, it's in his book, uh, Cisco Streetlove references, uh, the importance of Star Wars and how that factors in as well, where you have the black father figure Darth Vader, uh, being the father of Luke Skywalker and I guess Princess Leia as well. Um, but yeah, the Death Star, that was the, uh, the big ship that Darth Vader, uh, that the Dark Side had, uh, in, uh, Star, I guess, the very first Star Wars. That was the name of the ship, uh, that was going out to plan their, their intergalactic attack that, uh, Sky, uh, Luke Skywalker and the other white people were supposed to go and, and destroy the, the Death Star. So I'm sure that was, I'm sure that was probably, uh, directly linked in the song as well, but I'll, I'll check it out, uh, Jack Black. What's the name of the group?
Uh, Tenacious D. Black, uh, you know, the term for, uh, defense basketball.
Right. Okay. Tenacious D Blackjack. I'll check it out, see what it, see what it sounds like.
Oh, Jack Black, sorry, sorry.
Jack Black, Jack Black.
It, it was just so blatant and, and, and just, uh, the, the concept, once again, of progress and spreading across the cosmos, like you got something to offer, you know? Um, oh, but, uh, back to the text, I, I just wanted to, uh, to share that, you know, uh, in beginning to read the book, I was kind of, you know, was kind of put off by, uh, not anything that she's doing, just in my own mind, I'm like, who is she to invent some terms? And I'm like, oh, yeah, black people can invent some terms, you know, the, the C Lee and Umar, Umar Ho, I'm like, okay, you know, this makes it hard to follow, you know, I'm not very, I guess, overtly in my mind, I'm thinking, I'm not really used to people inventing terms that are thin air, you know, and I'm thinking all this stuff is invented, of course. Uh, but then you get to the point where, uh, uh, she talks about, uh, Freud and, and his, you know, super id and ego and how he tried to explain the cause. Um, and it is, you know, reading that, it, it brought me back to, to what I initially thought of her terms, I was like, oh, yes, this, this is much less, uh, easy to understand. Uh, and she has every right to make, to create these terms and they work, you know, so.
Thank you for sharing that, that is, I appreciate that self-reflection and honesty that is super important, and I'm sure there are a significant number of people who are listening in, or even if they haven't listened, who've read the book, very similar experience. Um, who is this, you know, black person to make up some term? Who does she think she is? Or even if it's not expressed that way, just maybe it being difficult, right? When you first start out trying to read it to try to understand the terms and becoming frustrated as opposed to saying, well, let me take my time, uh, this is a black person who is making up terms that will, with the goal in mind, the objective in mind, I mean, stated clearly, beginning of the book, the objective in mind of countering racism, white supremacy. So let me, you know, invest the time to try to understand the terms so I can really grasp, thoroughly understand what she's saying, as opposed to that, it just being, oh, I'm frustrated, I don't read, this is, you know, actually making up all these terms and I should just use terms that, you know, have already been, that white people have already constructed, that I'm familiar with, to explain this to me. And I, I said very early on that I suspect our white chip probably keeps a lot of us from being able to read and have a thorough comprehension of Yorugu, uh, just that programming of racist man, racist woman, even, you know, the way that we think about other black people. Who are you to make up a term? What gives you the right to make up a term? When white people, they go around making up terms left and right, and we, I've never heard anybody question a white person, uh, about making up a term. What gives you the authority to make up this term? White people do that all the time. So just that right there, I think, is incredibly important, and I suspect that for a lot of black people, they have had a very similar response when reading this book. So I just, I'm grateful for you sharing that, sir.
Oh, my pleasure. And then, and, uh, it made me think of the word, uh, identity, which is, I guess, probably derived from id and entity, which is, you know, id is, um, Freudian terms, so, you know, it, it, our speech and just the thought, you know, as she, you know, clearly illustrates in this book, is just rampant with these things, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. Excellent points, excellent points. Terms and definitions as well, I think Mr. Fuller talks about that too. Even if you do keep the same term, you might have to make new definitions up. You will probably have to make up some new definitions because everything has been tailored to support the continuance of racism, white supremacy. So that's going to be one of our major tasks, is making up new terms, not just for the sake, but making up new terms to more accurately describe what we're talking about from, and what she would say African-centered perspective, uh, from a non-white perspective of what's happening on the planet that works against racism, white supremacy. You're going to have to create a lot of things. I would even say probably, uh, the technology, everything about us, it's not just the words, everything about us has been constructed in a manner as to support racism, white supremacy, even the, the architecture of, uh, cities. I've heard that from urban planners who said the way the layout of various cities has been structured in such a way as to support white supremacy. So just have that in mind and really try to work against that as much as possible. Uh, sir, your line is still open, and, uh, I know our Brooklyn caller, I don't know if you had any comments on what you shared or something else, but your line should be open as well, and Pumpkin also?
Uh, another thought I thought of was, uh, uh, I always, when I see, um, you know, uh, I kind of want to be an architect when I was growing up, you know, uh, but, uh, I, I always liked, um, you know, the, the setup of cities and, you know, was infatuated buildings and stuff, but it, it, over time, it'd be, it, it, it came to represent like a, uh, like a, a red Corvette sticking out of the ground, like the big building, uh, just representing, you know, just a, uh, like a guy trying to, trying to, an old guy trying to get his virility back and, and project some, you know, masculinity, uh, and it, it seemed like, like all the development was, if, if, if there's such thing as love, then all this was sex, you know, just, just, uh, 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 basically busting in that, you know, it, it doesn't lead to anything productive like a, a baby or anything. It's just, just skewing, uh, their glory to themselves, you know?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Brooklyn caller, I thought you were going to get a word in, did you have a comment?
Oh, hey, yeah, I've been in and out, um, it's actually my birthday today, I was, had some other business to take care of, but I was, um, appreciating the, uh, discussion. Um, I was just thinking about, um, you, you played that Breaking Bad clip and, um, you know, just as far as the media that, you know, comes from the, uh, the silly, uh, white supremacy, and there's another show called Weeds, which is like, almost like a mirror image in, 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 in a lot of different ways, and, and the more, just saying that, just right now, I'm thinking about it, like, on many levels, it's the mirror image of that show, so it's a, it's a woman and, you know, she's selling drugs and, but it's, you know, weed, and there's all these non-white males that like, it's like, she like has this, the show's been on for like four years, I think, and just the whole history of the show is like all these non-white females also, and males, that got killed in the process of, and it's of, uh, all, of, uh, yeah, it's like kind of a half a co- half comedy, but, um, it's very serious and, yeah, I mean, you might want to check that out, you know, you might get sucked into that, just seeing the white supremacy in it, but, um, I, I, there's something that caught my eye earlier in the book, um, uh, a little quote from Frances Welzing, if I could read, um, from four, it's between four fifty-one and four fifty-two. And it's, it just was interesting to me and I was wanting to see, um, if anyone else found it interesting, um, bottom of four fifty-one, um, about Frances Chris Welzing, um, she reasons that European Caucasians, it's like four lines from the bottom, she reasons, uh, four fifty-one, she reasons that European Caucasians are successful in their attempt to dominate the majority of the world's people because the majority's experiences did not prepare them to understand patterns of behavior based on color deficiency and numerical inadequacy. But we must bear in mind that European behavior is pathological, i.e. not to be understood as the natural, quote unquote, reaction to, quote unquote, color deficiency. After all, it is not the lack of melanin that is the disease, but rather the behavior and utama roho that, in Welzing's view, results from that deficiency. I just found that interesting, uh, the distinction between, um, the lack of melanin and actual racism, white supremacy as distinguished from just the physical fact of not having melanin. So, I guess it's like, you know, the, the, the development has to reflect, um, or the development of the person in, you know, in the world, that your development is going to be what puts you, um, in that category as opposed to just something innate about you. So I, I just appreciate that. I think just saying it out loud kind of gives me more of an idea of what, of what's being said there. Anyone have some, uh, what do you guys think?
Hmm. Can you give me, uh, the conclusion, uh, that you were saying when you, just reading it out loud provided you more clarity? Can you give me that conclusion one more time and then I'll try and give you my, my two cents on it?
Yeah, definitely. Um, yeah, that's, uh, all right. After all, it is not the lack of melanin that is a disease, quote unquote, but rather the behavior and utama roho that, in Welzing's view, results from that deficiency. That's it.
Okay. And your, I mean, your kind of, your synthesis, like your takeaway point from all that you were saying, reading it, uh, out loud, kind of helped you to get a better grasp on what, what she was saying, Dr. Ani was saying about Dr. Welzing's point there?
Oh, that, um, that, that it's not, um, a so-called white person that is, um, the, the, the problem as separated from the worldview that they embrace as racist or suspected racist. I guess it just kind of takes, takes, takes the person doing the critique out of the category of being able to be called a racist themselves, like somebody that's saying, oh, well, these people are the disease because they're white. No, it's not because they're white, it's because they're racist.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Right. That makes sense. That makes sense. Yeah, yeah. Tying it to the, uh, to the behavior, which I think is, is, I think, uh, one of the important parts about why it's not just about, well, oh, you see my skin, uh, don't you? I, I think I've been pretty consistent in saying, you know, you, you don't want to get sucked into that at all. That's not what it means to be a white person. Uh, it's not some quote-unquote skin color, uh, their lack of, of melanin, which may be influencing behavior. Uh, and I think Dr. Welzing would assert that, you know, there's a correlation, but at the end of the day, it is about behaviors that are associated with being accepted as and functioning as a white person and those behaviors generally directed at terrorizing non-white people. Yeah, I'd heard about that program, Weeds, um, yeah, because you said it'd been on for, I don't know how long it's been on, but, uh, I'd had some people tell me about it, uh, before, um, you know, this, this, I guess it's a white female is the main character, white woman, she's selling, uh, drugs, marijuana, whatever it is, and, uh, yeah, the racism on the program. I've never seen a program and I, again, I caution people about those TV programs because they end up having three and four and eight seasons, so you get sucked in and then you end up having to invest a lot of time, uh, to watch the whole thing, to find out what happens. Uh, for Breaking Bad, I definitely would caution people about, you know, investing the time to watch it and getting all sucked into it because it is, um, I think at this point they have four seasons and season five is about the spark, which is supposed to be the last season, uh, they're supposed to wrap everything up, but I mean, you know, you can, you can study racism, white supremacy and do something. I suspect you could find a more constructive way to invest your time than trying to catch up and watch TV, but I, I definitely would say, uh, if that's a tool, particularly, I would say for younger people, Breaking Bad, it reveals so much. I mean, the white family, that's the character's name, the white family, that's who you're watching, selling drugs, killing people, making crystal meth, teaching science, uh, talking about, and there are several segments where they talk about the importance of carbon. Uh, I didn't catch that until I went back and saw, uh, the beginning of the series. I could have played multiple where they're talking about carbon and how this is such an important force in the universe, going back to Richard King's, uh, segment, talking about carbon, blackness, uh, melanin, uh, relating to higher levels of consciousness and meaning. Uh, that pops up several times, uh, on Breaking Bad, but, yeah, I'm sure they're, you know, more, you could be writing a book, working on a film, comic book, any number of things, writing your own TV script, uh, as opposed to sitting around and watching racists be racist, uh, on their different series. Um, let's see. Oh, check in. Um, let's see, I did want to make sure I got in, uh, couple more segments and then if y'all have other comments, what have you, y'all can feel free to, uh, to chime in as well. Um, this is, let's see here, think on four. This is on four seventy. Lost my page here, four seventy-three. Uh, four seventy-three, okay. Top of four, uh, top of four seventy-three. One of the most significant facts about these theories, talking about, uh, Covell, Dr. Welzing, uh, Richard King, Michael Bradley, uh, she also, Cheik Anta Diop, cowbell ring, uh, would be in there, his two-cradle theory, uh, with regards to what he thinks, uh, is motivating white people to be white supremacists. Four seventy-three, again, one of the most significant facts about these theories is that they are offered at all. What is in keeping with the European cultural acili is that the ideology of its academia, its political liberals dictates the terms for such discussions. The issue of the peculiar nature of white behavior is so threatening to the integrity of the culture as it now exists that they cannot allow this question to be asked, at least not in the proper form. Uh, just continuing, if we call European behavior towards others racism and such behavior appears to be characteristic of a culture created by Caucasians who represent a small minority of the world's people, then obviously our intelligence forces the question, why? What is the connection? Yet in Euro-American social and academic institutions, that question is never addressed in the ways we have seen it addressed in the above discussion. Rather, a new area of discourse is created called race relations, which implies, first of all, races are equally involved in the problem of conflict. Woo, beautiful point. How can we minimize conflict in the workplace or other social situations by understanding our differences and attitudes towards one another? Question. Differences apply to all those groups that may be brought into contact in an urban situation, Africans, Asians, Latinos, Europeans, et cetera. In other words, even the reactions of non-Europeans... Had to sneeze, excuse me. Um, lost my place. Uh, okay. Uh, in other words, even the reactions of non-Europeans to white racism become part of the problem with the eventual result taking the focus away from the real problem, white people, the European. Anyone who enters this discussion with honesty, i.e. placing Europeans firmly in the spotlight where they belong, focusing on their behavior towards others as the pathology that has set the syndrome in motion, that person by some ingenious double-think reversal, the familiar pattern of European ideology, is called a racist. But we know what the reality is and it is not so much a question in this instance of which theorist is right, but of their courage and ability to ask the right question. It matters little af- it matters little after all if the discussion is uncomfortable for Europeans. Certainly, we Africans are mandated by ancestral character to seek answers to the question of European difference. Really loved that segment. That is, uh, on four seventy-three, kind of getting towards the end of chapter eight. Um, I will share one more bit and then I'll, I'll kind of check, see if folks have, uh, any comments, uh, things they would like to share. This is on four, bottom of four seventy-three, going over to four seventy-four, uh, where she writes, uh, this is subtitled, "European Ideology and the Concept of the Cultural Other." We live in a world so polluted with the effects of European ideology and styles of thought that it may appear to be the case that a positive self-image within the context of one cultural philosophy necessarily implies a negative image of others, that to define the members of one's own culture as human means that others must be non-human, that for those with whom one identifies culturally to represent good, those in other cultures must be bad. This is not a universal phenomenon. It describes the particular dialectic of European ideology and the needs of the utama roho because of the historical reality of European imperialism. The pattern of their behavior toward others has become a necessary political dialectic in the self-deterministic objectives of majority peoples. Because all cultures without exception have been forcibly placed into a power relationship with European culture, an effective affirmation of their own nationalistic commitments must necessarily be a negation or denial of Europeans insofar as they, Europeans, are the proponents and agents of European ideology. But these ideologies do not inherently imply the dehumanization of the European, while European ideology does inherently imply the reverse, i.e. the dehumanization of those who are not human beings, non-white people. For this reason, it is the explanation of the interrelationship of European ideology, the European philosophical tradition and European values that is most helpful in the attempt to understand the pattern of European behavior towards others. The documentation of more blatant acts of European imperialism alone is necessarily of limited consequence. I'm skipping down, last little segment I'll read, this is bottom of four seventy-four, final paragraph, "European intellectual traditions and the imperialistic behavioral patterns of Europeans issued from a common ideological ground. They are dictated by the utama roho. They are explained by the utama wazo and they cohere in the acili. It is symbolic of this relationship that the name of Cecil Rhodes can represent simultaneously the essence of European colonial expansionism and one of the most valued intellectual traditions of the West. They are simply different manifestations of the same utama roho. Yet the Western way is deceptive because it is in the nature of the culture that a contemporary Rhodes scholar can separate herself from the history of Rhodesia. The concept of acili shows us, however, that this quasi-separation is not ethnologically, ideologically sound. The relationship between the concept of the cultural other and European cognitive structures is undubrated in our earlier discussion of the European utama wazo." I will stop there, uh, see if we had any other comments. We have about ten minutes, a little more than ten minutes left. Uh, any comments, uh, questions, thoughts, other portions from the book folks wanted to touch on? And we also got, uh, Bruce Fawn, uh, she had a happy birthday for, uh, our caller in Brooklyn.
Thank you. Happy birthday. Uh, if I could add, uh, onto the race relations and, and, uh, what she, uh, showed by explaining that, um, you know, a typical custom, uh, if somebody moves to your neighborhood or whatever would be to, you know, give them, uh, let them borrow some sugar. Uh, you know, uh, my cousin worked on plantations and, you know, uh, sugarcane and provided all the sugar was powered, the industrial revolution. Have we not been good neighbors? Um, you know, I like to think symbolically, so, you know, something that's freaking easy. Um, also, uh, I was thinking about the book when I was, uh, unfortunately shopping at, uh, let me call it Trader G.I. Joe's, because you see them going everywhere and grabbing their culture and then just packaging it and it wouldn't be, they wouldn't exist there if not for the gun, so Trader Joe, Trader G.I. Joe. Just simple, yeah? And, um, and, um, also relating to the Cecil Rhodes and the Rhodes scholar, uh, uh, dichotomy, uh, of, you know, uh, exemplifying him, but also, you know, he had a horrible behavior. Uh, look at your dollar bills, you know, the presidents, you know, and, and all the, the glory we have for the founding fathers or they have, uh, but you can't deny what, what they actually believed, you know, whether Abraham Lincoln has stated, now he's the vampire hunter, uh, you know, it, you can't tell me that, uh, that we've gotten past racism if you still got these guys' faces on the dollar, honestly, to me. I'll stop there.
I think she has that, uh, Dr. Ani, she has that section, um, maybe a hundred or so pages back, I think it's around page three hundred, a little bit before three hundred, where she has this gargantuan list of quotes from Benjamin Franklin and Mark Twain and Karl Marx and Susan B. Anthony and just all these luminaries, uh, the folks who, you know, come to represent the best of, of Western European white culture. And all of these folks just had blatantly white supremacist commentary about black people, all of them. She has a whole gambit, long, long list, uh, of people, just asserting, uh, white supremacy and their disregard for black, non-white life. Uh, it's just everyday phenomena, not just Cecil Rhodes. And I also wanted to make sure that I got in as well, uh, Imwebe Ajah Shangi, uh, he's been on the program a couple times, uh, TheGhettoTimes.com, his website, excellent, uh, counter-racist material, uh, but he touched on, uh, Cecil Rhodes, lot in common with Jeffrey Dahmer, Jerry Sandusky, uh, and I'm talking about sodomizing young, black, male children. Uh, and he had reported different material that talked about his sexually deviant behavior while he was in, quote-unquote, Rhodesia, Zimbabwe. Uh, so just, again, pattern of behavior so that you understand, you can put things in proper context and not see this as anomalous, but see this as standard behavior. And also keep that in mind, sexual deviance in a- And also keep that in mind, sexual deviance in addition to all of the other atrocious white supremacist conduct, keep that in mind, you know, White People 2012 are still glorifying and giving out Rhodes scholarships, and that's looked at as, you know, the premier academicians are Rhodes scholars. That right there tells you a lot about white people and how dedicated they are to the fundamental tenets of what they are all about. And I would say it goes back to what Mr. Fuller said, when he said he, he rarely generalizes about giving someone like the prototypical white supremacist or what, what this system is really all about. He said he wouldn't pick Adolf Hitler, he would pick Jeffrey Dahmer. It is about taking your gender. We don't just wanna dominate and kill you, we wanna take your gender. Uh, and I would, Cecil Rhodes, either or, you need a nineteenth or eighteenth, nineteenth century example, or if you need a more modern version, Jerry Sandusky, Dahmer, Cecil Rhodes, all about the same thing, Albert Fish, all about the same thing, dominate, emasculate black people. What would we do if we did not have black people on the planet? We would lose our minds. I hope someone also will remind me, we did a program, um, in October of this year, it was broadcast four ninety-five, and this is not Gus's stellar memory, this is 'cause I listened to the program this morning, so I know it was four ninety-five. But, uh, we had parents on, uh, from Switzerland, non-white parents, and their child was being terrorized in school, surprise, surprise, and they were playing this game, uh, Who's Afraid of the Black Man? It's like hide and seek, but it's who's, I mean, literally, Who's Afraid of the Black Man? That's what it's called. And, uh, they were saying, you know, this is racist, can you stop doing this? We, we don't like this, and they continued to do it. It was a part of the curric, like, literally, it was written in the curriculum at this school, they were supposed to make time to play this game, Who's Afraid of the Black Man? Anyway, they were on the program in October and they emailed me, just remind me, I'll make time tomorrow to share, uh, some of the email. It, uh, was a highlight in my day to hear from them, to get the, I guess it's been like the eighth month update since they were on the program with us at the end of last year, but it's in the archives, you can check it out, uh, it, I think it's, the title of it is Parents Slam, uh, Parents in Switzerland Slam Racist School, something to that effect. It's in October, that's close to the title, Parents in Switzerland Slam Racist School. Anywho, uh, do y'all have any other comments? Anything else?
Uh, yeah, uh, I'm, I feel like I'm arguing, so anybody else, you cut me off. But, um, synthesizing the book in my brain while I'm reading, uh, it, it, you know, and once again, uh, thinking about it symbolically, uh, or just encapsulating it, um, you know, like, like, uh, your t-shirt, you know, something that's simple and to the point, you know, I'm trying to figure out how, how, uh, what's the easier way, like, let's say, reading Yerubu is a, is a big task for most black folks, I believe, unfortunately, and, um, but, you know, how to, you know, encapsulate the principles. And, um, like, I was talking to my mom about, uh, you know, uh, some of the, uh, the book, and, uh, she wanted me to summarize it for her, but, uh, basically, we believe in the golden rule, they want the gold, and they're rules, you know? Um, and another one, but, but I think it's at the heart of it is, uh, white folks can't be the sickness and the cure simultaneously. You know, if black folks are sick, you know, there's, there's a lot of, trying to run to, you know, uh, Melinda Gates and Bill Gates and get all the vaccines and da-da-da-da and, uh, contraception and, ah, get outta here. Uh, y'all can't be the cure and the sickness at the same time.
Those vaccine, Curtis Cost, again, uh, vaccines are dangerous, that is total depopulation. Not theirs, is not, think, I played that sound clip when Curtis Cost was on the program, uh, that was October two thousand and ten, uh, when Bill Gates up in my neck of the woods, probably right here in Seattle, um, where he was saying, uh, that it would be great if we could get rid of, I think he was talking like major number, like ten million people, it would be great if we could get ten million people off the planet. And, I mean, you know, anytime they start talking about getting rid of people like that, they are not gonna be heading out to Beverly Hills, or Utah, or Idaho, or Wyoming, or anywhere, New England, where you got large populations of white people. They're gonna be thinking Haiti, continent of Africa, anywhere where you got dark people, let's get rid of them first. Uh, but yeah, definitely, they, they, uh, I would say the same thing with the anti-racist, I think that's a big part of what their program is all about, is about domination. I, I've, I've referenced nineteen eighty-four regularly, I think that whole concept of white people creating the problem and then giving the illusion that they have also generated the solution, uh, so that you are constantly just looking to them for your answers, they're constantly in control, uh, that is staple part of their practice, really gotta be on guard about that, and I think that just comes down to having an understanding of what it means to be a white person. I think once you got that clear in your mind, what that means, uh, how you are supposed to relate to a white person as a non-white person, I think that'll put you in much safer territory, so that you won't be running a look, uh, to Bill Gates, or Timothy Wise, or any other white person, uh, who is saying that, hey, I'm, I am about democracy, I am not about racism, I'm about treating people correctly and doing the right thing. Uh, you will take that, killer beans.
And, um, it, 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 it once again goes back to the, the, um, the rhetorical and the rational. Uh, I, I made a little chart, uh, it's basically, uh, you know, like the Republicans, the Democrats, it's good cop, bad cop, but you ain't got no jurisdiction, you know? Uh, think about that, uh, but, you know, it's good cop, bad cop, missionary versus Robert Barron, highbrow versus lowbrow, rhetorical versus rational, Catholicism versus Protestantism, and I added on Bull versus S.H.I. Black. Just to summarize once again.
That's great. Maybe you can, I don't know, you can write up a blog report, uh, I don't know if you have a blog, if you don't, you can make one, it's not very difficult, um, I'd be willing to post it, if you, if you write it up, kind of, uh, a report to synthesize. I was even gonna suggest that, the people who've been keeping up with the reading, people who've been listening to the programs we've been doing on Yerubu, um, next week should be our last session, perhaps you all could write up something, uh, to kinda synthesize, a summary on what you learned from the book, if a black person, you know, why should I read this? You know, what, what should I hope to learn from this book? You can give them something, you know, short, simple, to the point, to kinda help explain some of the key concepts, uh, some of the important lessons, uh, that you took from the book, to kinda help motivate them to read it, and it'll be kind of a study guide. It should be something short, to the point, that will kinda help them grasp what it is that they should be taking away from this book. Why should I, you know, this gargantuan six hundred page book, why in the world should I devote so much time and energy to going through all this? Bam, you can drop, you know, a little one-page summary, this is why you should read it.
That, that's absolutely in the plans, um, but, you know, um, not, but, uh, speaking from experience of putting stuff out, uh, you know, I, I used to do music, uh, putting stuff out in public, I'm, you know, upon reading this book afterwards, you know, taking a little, uh, lull in my career, um, I look back at some of the stuff that I did and I, I, you know, kinda cringe 'cause I'm clearly confused, uh, and, uh, but that is the intent to, to, to try and encapsulate and distill stuff, and my mom, she even wanted me to type down, uh, type up the notes I was taking just to, uh, help her out and her, uh, you know, but I think she has less patience for reading it than me. Uh, but, uh, yeah, gotta get, most, you know, I, I cram my brain with information, but I gotta get it out, or else.
Absolutely. That's great. That is second week in a row that we've heard, uh, someone who listens to the program apparently trying to share some of this information with their parent, that is phenomenal. If you could take that info and, and get some of your, uh, family, uh, attempted family, quote-unquote, friends, spouse, children, if you can take this information and disseminate it to them, that is phenomenal. Um, man, I, I don't even have words for that, that is, that is outstanding, um, certainly if they're willing to read. Go ahead.
Oh, I didn't like to shut off, but, uh, you know, uh, 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 I said on previous programs, uh, I may extend my mom is, I may typical in that she's black, uh, you know, usually it's the father, you know, and, uh, and, you know, due to societal issues, he's gonna cut out or she's gonna leave him, the white mom, so you're gonna end up with a black kid getting raised by, uh, the white parent. And to a degree, that's what happened, just 'cause my dad kinda drove her away as well. But, uh, uh, ultimately, she came, you know, uh, was still in my life, stayed in my life, you know, I'm probably overplaying that, uh, she was definitely in my life. Uh, and, you know, her understanding is, is light years ahead of most black folks, uh, uh, I would say it's on Yerubu and, and just from what she's observed, and it, it, that's why it all resonated with me when I'm reading it, because I, I'm already, you know, up close and I, I can see white folks, you know, literally, uh, unfortunately, and, um, uh, but, but her understanding, uh, was very close to this book, you know, uh, but, yeah, once again, this, this, uh, book just lays out the pattern, you know, you, 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 you can cite anomalous things or, or reference, you know, individual stuff, uh, and anomalous, uh, but, um, but the pattern and, and her explanation of it is so thorough and, and debunking of, uh, uh, other people's theories or, or her, not debunking, but, uh, her take on it. It, it, it's an invaluable book. Um, I still need to read, uh, Neely Fuller's, um, book, I started that, but, uh, I still need to read that, but I found her, although tough to read, a little bit more invading just 'cause he repeats, um, stuff through the nine areas of activity, so, you know, it becomes a lot of almost boilerplate to a degree, but I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I'm definitely gonna read that, and I'm sure there's a lot of good stuff in there.
Right on. Mr. Fuller, he should be, uh, back with us, uh, white people permitting, on, uh, July fifteenth. Should be, uh, I think his twentieth visit, uh, to the cows, but yeah, so, if you check out his work, um, if you have any questions, he should be in the house, uh, answering any questions, uh, July fifteenth. Um, I just, you said your, is it that your mom is black and your father is white? Is that how it is?
Correct.
Okay.
And, uh, did I mention these guys?
Hmm, hmm, very interesting, very interesting. Do y'all still have contact? Do, do you still have, uh, contact with your father?
Uh, uh, I live with him, unfortunately.
Oh, wow, wow.
I mean, you know, he, he, he's good, you know, uh, well, uh, imagine Ned Flanders, if you've ever seen him, but, uh, but, you know, uh, he, he makes no illusion that he's a man of the white people.
Wow.
Exactly.
Wow. I've heard Ned Flanders, this is, this is no joke, I've heard Ned Flanders make some blatantly racist commentary, um, so, you know, wow, that is fascinating, um, yeah, I don't, if you, uh, you know, I don't know how your schedule works out, but if you have the, the time and interest, it would be great if you can dial in on one of the Saturday programs, uh, to kinda share more on that. I, I think that we do have a significant number of non-white people who listen who have a white parent to kinda help process through that. I know that can be kinda confusing for, or very confusing for a lot of non-white people, and it really inhibits their ability to accurately grasp what it means to be a white people and to shape your conduct in accordance with that accurate understanding. But, yeah, one of the Saturday programs, it would be great if you would be interested to share more info about that and, uh, how your understanding of even your father has changed as you've become less confused, um, yeah, I think that would be, uh, I think it would be helpful, uh, to a lot of non-white people who listen to the program.
I'll, I'll, I'll call in tomorrow.
Beautiful, beautiful. Um, I'm gonna read one last segment before we wrap up, and then if anybody has any closing thoughts, be prepared, and the prayer, if anybody wants to get that in. Uh, program tomorrow, nine PM Eastern, six PM Pacific, compensatory call-in, uh, that will be Saturday, June thirtieth. And again, the reminder, make sure you let me, uh, for tomorrow, the email from, uh, the parent in Switzerland, man, uh, go back and check out the programs, you'll have context, know what we're talking about, and then the email will make a lot more sense. Uh, this is on four eighty-two, conclude talking about synthesis, synthesizing what we should have learned from chapter eight, bottom of four eighty-two, "The Logic of Supremacy and Destruction. The relationship between European intracultural behavior and European behavior towards others is that the lack of love sympathetic relationship for each other requires an other to absorb aggression and to allow a bond of identification to form between members of the culture. Therefore, while power and racialism may play a part in the collective behavior of other cultural groups, only Europeans are racist by nature and because of their culture. This is so because, one, they are the only people whose cultural Asili is energized by the drive for power; two, because racism can be defined as systematic behavior resulting from xenophobia in combination with concrete circumstances of power; and, number three, finally, because only the European Udomorojo is insufficient in itself, therefore demanding a cultural, racial, other to relate to. This combination makes racism endemic to European culture and defines the goal of white supremacy, European power over others as the supreme goal of the culture. That is the statement that no other culture can make. African and other majority peoples are not passive victims of European aggression, and we do not intend to give that impression. History is as much the history of our forms of resistance as it is of the power of Europe, to say nothing of the long period of history before Europe came into existence as a cultural entity. But the focus of this discussion is not on other than Europeans, it is on Europeans themselves. This is not to say that Europeans have not been affected by the rest of us. In fact, part of their success issues from their ability to use that influence to further dominate those from which it comes. We are concerned here, however, with the specific relationship between European behavior and the European Udomowazo, culturally structured thought system, in that regard, European conceptions of others become important. We are at present only secondarily concerned with the reactions of other peoples to European behavior. These reactions have only been infrequently discussed when they helped to clarify some aspect of European behavior or ideology. My ultimate concern is to favorably influence the rest of us in our capability to realize self-determination, i.e. to eliminate Europe as an impediment to our progress and as the cause of our destruction. I believe that scrutiny of European culture will lead us in that direction, amen. As Johari Amini says, "It is our working definitions that are the foundation of the ways in which we live." The European conception of the cultural other is such a definition. Clearly, all cultures define its members as different from those outside. That is part of what culture means. And this difference is a meaningful one, i.e. the members of one's culture have priority, are more important, emotionally closer than those of other cultures because of those things they share, just as the members of a family mean more to us than those who are not included in the family. It is indeed part of the function of cultural definition to define a group in this way. It follows then that for any group, there are the definitions of we and they, self and other. And for any group, these definitions should carry with them behavioral implications. They are not treated the same as we, if only because they do not have priority. We come first. Even though this may appear to be logical, it is not, given the Asili of African culture in which non-members are often given the same privileges as members. Diop has remarked on this xenophobic African tendency, I have got to pause, shake onto Diop. "The European we-they dichotomy has implications that it does not have within the philosophies of other cultures, and the outsider as defined by other cultures is qualitatively different from the conception of the cultural other. The European conception of the cultural other is a unique product of European ideology designed to answer the particular needs of the Udomorojo that houses an inordinate power drive. The outsider as defined by other cultures does not have the features of the cultural other. A cultural other could not be conceived of in these other ontological, epistemological systems. In majority cultures, inanimate objects have more meaning, significance than do others, non-white people, for Europeans. The cultural other is not the same as the traditional enemy. She does not have the status of an enemy. She is less than an enemy. The concept implies the ultimate in dehumanization, in devaluation." European behavior towards others is so extreme in part because their conception of the cultural other is so negative. Atrocities are no longer atrocities if their objects, excuse me, atrocities are no longer atrocities if their objects are invisible. They become atrocities only because those on whom they are perpetuated have some meaning. The cultural other is significant only insofar as its existence, creation, is necessary for the maintenance of the European self-image and Udomorojo and provides for the survival of European culture. It is the essential nature, acili, of the culture that is revealed in the conception of the cultural other. It is the, it is this conception that services the needs of European cognitive strivings for power, supremacy and control, all of which are basically destructive to the necessarily integrative function of culture. By creating the cultural other as the proper object of these strivings, Europeans ingeniously use the power drive to keep their culture intact. The result is a culture whose primary rationale is universal supremacy. The culture has survived as a coherent entity because, as stated before, the Europeans' intracultural behavior has been effectively held in check by an ethnic, by, excuse me, by an ethic that differentiated between the European other and the cultural other. The tendencies of European behavior mandated by the acili are so inherently destructive that the cultural other is needed for their uninhibited acting out. There is no other Udomorojo or self-concept that demands a cultural other. There are enemies, even barbarians, but not a cultural other, it is actually a deep-rooted European need. The acili demands it, the attitude is unique among cultural groups, it helps to explain a style of behavior that is also unique. Imperialism is not unique to Europe, neither is power, but both the extremity of imperialism and the intensity of power enacted and possessed by European culture are unique to the great misfortune of the rest of us. Europeans are not the most powerful people in the world because they are the smartest, as they would have us believe. The actualization of power is a function of the need for power as dictated by the Udomorojo of the culture. Its energizing mechanisms, Europeans need power as no other people do. The culture is so successful at gaining power because there is nothing within the culture that effectively conflicts with the achievement of power. What this description of their behavior has shown us is that anything goes. The power need is compounded by and related to the lack of spiritual substratum on which to base a viable morality. Europeans, in a very real sense, have no spiritual community, this is a melee inherent in the formulating, acili and definition of the culture. Only now overtly manifesting itself in such a way that it becomes apparent to a tiny portion of its own participants. The pattern of European behavior towards others is inseparable from the European Udomowazo and therefore the intellectual life of the culture. This pattern of violence, aggression and destruction is not an aberration. Our study demonstrates that the acili mandates all three, and unless the collective, cognitive and effective definitions change, that behavior will continue. And these definitions cannot change because of the nature of the European himself, all are part of a coherent ideological whole. Right on, we will be wrapping up the book next week, I cannot believe it, I'm still very suspicious that most of the people have not been following, keeping up with the reading. But, you know, it'll be archived, you can check it out, read at your own pace, understand people have jobs, plantation, think some people were actually late in getting the book. That's it, check it out, uh, I think, uh, you will definitely benefit. Um, did anybody, uh, want to wrap up, uh, you have a sentence they wanted to get in before we can conclude, uh, prayer, anything?
Uh, I shouldn't say it, but, um, uh, I don't have the book yet, uh, I actually have a PDF that I found online, and it was really hard to find and I feel guilty about it, but I couldn't offer it up for sharing, which I feel guilty about even, you know, saying that because I didn't want to chip off the filter, but I have it.
Again, I appreciate the honesty, no shame, um, as I said, you know, I know some people, they didn't have the book when we first started out, they got it late, all that jazz, um, you know? If you get it, if you choose to invest the time and energy, I will say again, this book, more than any other book, is responsible for this program being on, all six hundred plus programs that we have done. Uh, the name of the program with the parents in Switzerland, it was from October twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven, it is Parents Slam Swiss School Over Racist Game. That is the title, Parents Slam Racist School Over Racist Game, October twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven. Uh, we will be back tomorrow, hopefully we'll have constructive dialogue, dial in if you have projects, research, observations, looking forward to hearing from you all. Also, there was a great chart in the book on four seventy-eight, check that chart out, kind of demonstrates what you should expect, unfortunately, if you are non-white. Check out the chart, four seventy-eight, I think it gives a lot of great info, uh, in Yorubu. Finishing the book next week, four ninety to the end of the book, should be eighty pages, all done, next Friday, finishing the book, tune in. Uh, we will wrap up with our prayer, uh, to conclude things, so we get any volunteers, uh, this was submitted via ebonynewschannel.blogspot.com, ebonynewschannel.blogspot.com. Uh, the prayer she submitted reads, "Oh, great spirit, whose voice I hear in the winds and whose breath gives life to all the, to all the world. Hear me, I am small and weak, I need your strength and wisdom. Let me walk in beauty and make my eyes, ever hold the red and purple sunset. Make my hands respect the things you have made, my ears sharp to hear your voice. Make me wise so that I may understand the things you might teach me. Let me learn the lessons you have hidden in every leaf and rock. I seek strength not to be greater than my brother, but to fight my greatest enemy, myself. Make me always ready to come to you with clear hands and straight eyes, so when life fades as the fading sunset, my spirit may come to you without shame." Chief Yellow Lark Lakota, Native American prayer. Context of white supremacy, signing out, replace white supremacy with justice immediately, we will be back tomorrow, thank you everybody for tuning in.